Hi Kim.
Hi Brad, hi Valerie.
Morning everybody.
Good morning councillors, good morning Attorney Grun, good morning Director Jackson.
Good morning everyone.
Good morning.
And good morning Mr. Sandro, didn't want to leave you out.
Good morning Councillor Farmer.
Make sure to be here any minute, he was having issues and is restarting.
Hello everyone, can you hear me? Could someone say something so I can see?
Yes, something.
Oh thank goodness.
Oh good, it's fixed.
That's one win on the day so far. Hold on to that one. Okay. Is Councilwoman Roe Lewis here yet? Not as of yet. I'm gonna have a brief side conversation with Ms. Grun and hopefully Ms. Roe Lewis. And then just about procedure and be right back.
What's everyone's favorite breakfast spot in Hampden?
Of course to be brothers.
Route 10 diner. Mine's Barbara's.
My own French press.
I like a big bready breakfast.
Barbara's is a close second.
Barbara's is my jams.
What's your favorite order there? What do you, what do you get? What would you recommend?
Anything with a side of tomatoes. So he gives me like slices of big tomatoes on the side, which is hard to order other places. I feel like no one's like just giving me tomatoes when I would need them. But they're good like that. And I love their grits, their grits are really good.
Route 10 diner gives tomatoes on the side too. I don't understand it, I'm with you there.
I love tomatoes on the side.
I do too, but I don't know why he does it. It's like so many people leave them, but his breakfasts are good.
If they're good tomatoes, if they're, if they're ripe and they're tasty, otherwise they're like not good.
When I was in the first trimester of my pregnancy, I loved like nice crispy tomato to cut into. With a little olive oil, mm. I miss it. Actually, I haven't been to Barbara's in a while, but now we're all vaccinated, so.
Where is Barbara's?
It's over here on Dixwell. It's across street. It's across street from Keefe.
On Street.
Right next door to Keefe.
Thanks. I know I go down to Three Brothers once in a while, but I don't remember going by Barbara's, so thank you.
Two from Three Brothers.
In New Haven Bella's Cafe for breakfast is unbelievable.
I've been there once. I haven't been there.
What's the name of it?
Bella's.
Bella's. And they do grits southern style if you like grits.
I do like grits.
Have we thrown in New Haven, the pantry, right? Sell out to Mechanic Street.
I ruled out the pantry, but I'm not gonna say it on the record.
How was everyone's Mother's Day?
Mine's was perfect.
Mine was great.
Yeah. I feel like I'm still celebrating mine.
Sad cravings and I'm like, yeah, that's a blessing. I don't know.
My cravings I didn't think were that bad until now I'm a regular person. And now I was like, I really needed a smoothie like really bad back then. I guess that was a craving. Like I almost cried for some Dairy Queen. I wasn't emotional for anything else. I was like, soft serve?
I made Mendy drive two hours to a restaurant in a completely different part of Georgia while I was pregnant, just because I needed their tofu.
Oh my goodness. That's a, okay, so that's an obvious craving. That's like, you know it. I was like living in a fog. I was like, I don't have cravings. I don't know what you're talking about, like.
And what's funny, I'm still, and it's they, so they soak their tofu and then they in nutritional yeast, which is all B vitamin. And they saute it in soy sauce. It's, I have the recipe book and I just can't do it the way that they do. I am still B12 deficient to this day. And I think that's what I was craving. I think they still, they stole it all from me.
Oh my goodness, those dang babies. Margie's nodding her head like, yeah.
I, I craved sushi and so this is going back like 23 years. Yes, and there wasn't, there wasn't the amount of sushi places that there are now in, in area. I had to drive to New Haven to get sushi. I had to, I had to have sushi when I was pregnant. I don't know, it's crazy.
The thing that you really, really want, but they're like, you probably shouldn't eat those, like, but I need it.
And my daughter loves sushi. That's her favorite food, so go figure.
Oh my goodness.
Mine won't touch nutritional yeast or tofu, but whatever more from.
I saw a video on Facebook and this woman was sharing with her husband her craving and it was a cheeseburger with jelly. I was just like.
Well, everyone, sorry about that. Just checking on some process things. And so before we open up, I am just gonna say, process wise, we're gonna open the meeting. We'll have our, our pledge allegiance, public comment. At that point, I'll entertain a motion to, to accept the budget. I will then share screen and read the budget. Ordinarily, that would be the responsibility and the privilege of the majority leader. However, you know, Ms. Roe Lewis is having a couple difficulties this morning, so she'll join when she is able. And you know, she'll be here very soon, but she just has some things to take care of, you know, grandchildren. And then if anyone wishes to make a change to the budget, there would be a motion to amend item one. Other items, of course, could be amended as well, but if you wish to make a change in the budget, it would be item one. So having said that, I'll call the order. First taking a little breath, whoo, okay. So having said that, we'll call the order this meeting, especially the Hampden Legislative Council at 10:45 PM. Ms. Renta, could you take the role?
Councilwoman Austin. Councilwoman Byers.
Here.
Councilwoman Bonnades.
Here.
Councilwoman Caesar.
Here.
Councilwoman Klaus.
Here, just a quick point, I am traveling today, so there may be times when I log off and like, log back in on my phone.
Councilwoman Dolan.
Yes.
Farmer.
Present.
Councilwoman Horsley.
Here.
Councilwoman Gary. Councilman McDowell.
Here.
Councilman McGary.
Present.
Councilwoman Roe Lewis. I see that she joined.
Ms. Renta, Ms. Councillor Austin is in the audience.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to mark Councilman Austin present. Councilwoman Roe Lewis, are you with us?
Here, I'm here.
Gotcha. Councilwoman Shoemaker.
Present.
Councilman Weber.
I am here.
Oh, gotcha. Councilwoman Wetmore.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you, Ms. Renta. Mr. Farmer, you had a brief, or you had a point of personal privilege you would like to share?
I, I have a brief, I'll be bold yet brief, point of personal privilege and thank you, Council President, for allowing me to. I just wanna thank everyone, especially the constituents of the fifth district. Today kicks off the first day of Tourette's National Awareness Month. Council President in the past got us little lapel pins that I still have, so thank you. I, I just wanted to, I am the second documented elected official in the country. I've been elected with Tourette's and I thank the good people of Hampden for allowing me that opportunity. Two hundred thousand people such as myself with this disorder. It's a neurological disorder. Sometimes I'll see me hit in my face, hitting myself. Those manifestations I have without the noise cancelling headphones, as many as thirty to sixty a minute. So through community and through the village that we have, I've been able to not be a victim, but to be empowered and to do this work. So thank y'all for the great blessing and opportunity to have the highest privilege to be a councillor, to be the second in the nation and showing that Hampden is truly about inclusivity and about bringing everyone into our great community through you Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Farmer. And I would point out, when I asked Mr. Farmer originally, how, how is it that you kick off the month in the middle of the month? He said, well, it's a very complex condition, which it is, so. So thank you for reminding us of that, Councillor Farmer. We'll have our pledge in moment assignments. Mr. Farmer, would you like to lead us in the pledge today?
Sure, I, I will lead us. Allegiance to the.
Thank you. We'll now open our public comment section. Ms. Renta, we did receive a letter that came in late from yesterday.
Well, it was a letter that everybody was referring to yesterday. It was meant for yesterday's public hearing. I assume, but it didn't pop in until 12:11 AM this morning.
In the, in the interest of fairness, what we'll do is we'll have our verbal public input and then perhaps we could share a screen with that letter. Just so that even though it came in late, I'm sure it was sent on time. So just out of out of an abundance of acceptance and recognizing importance of public input, we'll make sure that we, we, can you share, we'll be able to share a screen with that later, Ms. Renta, in a few minutes?
Yes, yes.
All right, in that case, anyone who would wish to address the public on our item on the agenda today. We'll begin that now. You will have three minutes. I will click the person and they will be then able to talk. I will give a note or a sign at thirty seconds and then remind you at three o'clock and ask, or three o'clock, at three minutes and ask you to wrap things up. I've asked the folks who wish to give up comment, raise hands and have their full name on their Zoom ID and also state their full name for the record when they begin speaking. I see Ms. Anne Altman. Ms. Altman, the floor.
Yeah. Beth, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you see me?
We cannot see you, but we can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry you can't see, I'm old, I'm much older than when you last saw me. I'm not gonna waste a lot of your time, but there's something extremely important that you need to pay attention to. In yesterday's very large packet of comments, you should have read two, three emails. One from Joe McDonough, one from Holly Massey and myself. That's to say from two chairs of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the zoning enforcement officer. All three of us, for different good and important reasons, oppose the merger of planning and zoning with economic development. This hasty middle of the night insane decision, if you'll pardon my French, without consultation and forethought, likely involves charter violations, complexities that anyone who's not served on the P&amp;Z Commission is unlikely to know about, possible conflicts of interest and removal of very necessary checks and balances. These things have been outlined in the letters that I alluded to from Joe McDonough, from Holly Massey and from myself yesterday. It's really important. It's not just yada, yada, yada. Now, I beg you, please demonstrate that this public hearing isn't just for show and that it's not just an occasion for the public to let off steam. We've all let off a lot of steam, but this is more important than steam. Pay attention to the comments you received from Joe and Holly and myself and reverse this ill-conceived merger before you approve the budget. Restore your original budget for the two departments. And if you want to consider a merger, do so only after appropriate consultations and discussions. I beg you, do not act in haste and repent at leisure. This is really important and must be reversed. Thank you for your attention. Did you get all that?
Yes, Ms. Altman, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you for listening. I do appreciate your hard work. I know how hard you've worked. But this thing just came in under the radar and has to be fixed before it goes any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Altman. Ms. Alain Dove. Out of the floor is your three minutes.
Thank you. Um, I, do you need my full name? Alain Dove, Santa Fe Avenue, Hampden. I'm, I'm calling, I'm writing to you, I'm speaking to you today because that's how confused I am by everything that's gone on. This last bit of the zoning office or the planning office merging with the economic development is something that I care about. I, I'm not doing this because the, the other three have discussed this. I'm looking at this from a finance perspective. What happens if, I mean, I'm pretty sure that you can't do this, but anyway, I'm pretty sure you can't do it. So now we're gonna have a legal issue going to undo it. And you're not saving any money, according to Kurt's Mayor Lang's letter, it's like a $10,000 savings. That could be eaten up in legal fees. So why do that now? Just revert back to the one, the, the original budget without the two division, without the merged departments. Approve that budget, save us the time. If he wants to merge him, he can go through all the process that you have to go through, which is lengthy. I mean, it's a lengthy process, but it certainly is one that would require, I think, much more public awareness than has been given at this last minute suggestion to merge the two departments. It's not a huge savings. Heck, we had to pay $10,000 more for our police car for Pete's sake. So, you know, right, remember, is that what, isn't that what the police chief said, that they had under budgeted or something? I don't remember what he said, but I remember one of these meetings about that. So if, if we're, we're saving practically nothing, it's gonna probably cost us a lot. Probably may not be legal, you know, based on state statute as well as the charter, why are you doing it? So that's all I'm asking. That's the question I'm asking. You don't need to answer right now, obviously. But I hope you'll think about it because I don't think it's worth doing right this minute. Let's do it open. Let's let the people talk. Let's let the, the different folks that have, that have expertise in this area really put their opinions forth. Thank you so much. And again, I do, I end my letters every time with my thanks for your good work and I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Dove. Is there another member of the public who would like to address the council on our items today? Is there another member of the public who would like to speak to the council on the items on the agenda today? Give one more chance. Is there another member of the public who would like to speak to the council on the items on the council agenda today? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close our public input session. Our next item, pardon me, I'm just gonna prepare to share my screen here. Well, the, the item on our agenda is the adoption of town budget ordinance establishment of tax rate and levy expenditures and accounting fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Once you're gonna put this other letter on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Byers. Yes, Ms. Renta, could you share screen with the public input letter that came in? I'm reopening public input. Thank you, Ms. Byers. Okay, hopefully that's been enough time. Thank you, Ms. Renta, for sharing your screen. And, you know, I'll move on to our agenda item. I'll re, will read it in its entirety and then ask for a motion to approve. And I will share my screen with it just a moment, please. Uh, this, is this visible?
Yes, Council President.
Thank you. Whereas pursuant to statute ten dash two point two A of the Charter of the Town in Hampden, the mayor is required to transmit a proposed town budget to the Legislative Council no later than March eighteenth of each year. And whereas on March seventeenth, twenty twenty one, the mayor transmitted the proposed town budget, including the contents related by statute ten dash two B of the Hampden Charter. And whereas the Legislative Council conducted public hearings on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty one town and March thirty first, twenty twenty one Board of Education, in accordance with ten. in accordance with ten dash three A of the Charter, which requires a public hearing honored before the first day of March. And whereas in accordance with ten dash three B of the Hampton Charter, the legislative council is required to take final action on the proposed town budget, not later than May seventeenth, twenty twenty one. And whereas in accordance with ten dash three B one, at the time of council approves the adopted town budget, may fix the fix the tax rate in Mills, which shall be levied on the taxable property in the town for the ensuing fiscal year. Now, being ordained by majority vote, the legislative council as follows that. One, the legislature council hereby adopts a budget for the fiscal year commencing on July first, twenty twenty one and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty two fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two designated as the adopted town budget in the amount of to be filled in when we complete expenditures and like appropriations. Two, for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two taxes not in excess of $250 shall be collected in one payment pursuant to CGS twelve dash forty one forty four and property taxes under $25 waived pursuant to CGS twelve dash forty four C. And three, for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, the dates on which taxes on the grand list of twenty twenty shall become due and payable are July first, twenty twenty one and January first, twenty twenty two. And four, the legislative council will modify the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two adopted town budget by motion or order in a manner consistent with the applicable provisions of the town charter, including not limited to transfers, additional appropriations and modification of the budget. And five, the mayor shall be authorized to transfer between light items within any department commission or board the amount of $10,000 without approval by the legislative council, with the exception of those transferred governed by ten dash seven D one B of the town charter. Six, that the finance director shall be authorized and ordered as follows. A, close out completed capital projects, accounts and transfer any surpluses in any amount to cover deficits for any capital projects approved by the legislative council, not to exceed amounts appropriated thereof, therefore, or after consultation with the town's bond council to be used for the reimbursement of principal and or interest paid on the town's bonds for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. B, close out and transfer any surpluses in any amounts in the line accounts in the budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one to the general fund, with the exception of the medical self-insurance and the workers' compensation self-insurance accounts. C, transfer the accrued interest in the capital projects fund to the general funds of the year ending in thirty twenty twenty one. D, effectuate into departmental transfers, general and special in any in an amount not to exceed $10,000 during the last ninety days of the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty two in accordance with ten dash seventy two A of the town charter. E, reports to the mayor, legislative council also transfers, including the individual and aggregate funds transferred. And then we'll have the the mill rate. The taxable rate shall be fixed at after amendment in adjusted grandly in the amount of like to finance appropriations approved by, et cetera. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Baez. Seconded by Ms. Horstley. Uh, just a moment, please. Is there a discussion? Mr. Farmer.
Thank you, Council President. Just a point of clarification. If we wanted to make amendments, we'd move on item one and this would be the time to do so through you, Council President.
That is correct. And perhaps to be helpful now, Mr. Jackson, could you state at this point what the mill rate is presently?
With the changes made and reconciled, the mill rate is fifty two point six zero.
Do you have the other the money amount, the dollar amount as well?
Uh, Mr., uh, give me one second.
Do you please repeat the right? I'm sorry. Please repeat that.
Fifty two point.
Fifty two point six zero. Uh, and the total size of budget, Mr. McGarry, is that we are looking for?
Yes, sir.
It is two hundred and sixty two point four million dollars.
Thank you. Right? Is there any discussion on the proposed budget of fifty two point six mill rate for two hundred and sixty two point four million dollars? Counselor Farmer.
Thank you, Council President. I apologize as I stepped away from my computer for a second. I would like to make a transfer from the street outreach line to line. Hold on one second, to line uh, to the GRB line twelve four oh one dash seventy seventy four.
Second now.
I moved, and Mr. Farmer, I'm sorry. This is police or community youth?
Uh, it's police to community youth.
Police to community. As the maker of the motion, Mr. Farmer, would you like to speak to it?
I'll keep it brief. Uh, I I requested that we bump up of line in the police department. Both uh, agencies and 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 lines that we're talking about do great work with the youth. There is a a concern that I have about scope of work and and I want to make sure that we are being equitable in that sense. So I'd like to transfer 25,000 over to this other line. I don't believe it will change the work that's needed and wrap around services to our youth. And I hope that my counselors can support me in this transfer of funds to do the same scope of work through you, Council President.
Thank you, Counselor Farmer. I'm sorry, Counselor Farmer, could you say the line number there it's going to again?
Yep, no problem. That is twelve four oh one dash seventy seventy four.
Is that the to or from?
Uh, from police to community youth. I'm sorry, Mr. Farmer, is that clear?
No, but what the the number he just ran ran off is the street outreach. That's the from. We're taking it from there and putting it into the community services, JR B account number one, two, two, zero, two, zero, three, six, six.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Renta, for that correction. I apologize.
That's okay. I just want to be clear in what I said.
Amount, please. What amount was that?
Uh, that was 25,000, Counselor. So a transfer, not a cut, but a transfer from one to the other.
Thank you. Discussion on this transfer. Okay, seeing none, I will call for the vote. All favor.
Counselwoman Bonnades is.
Counselwoman Bonnades hand is up.
Thank you. I didn't see that. Counselor Bonnades.
Yes, um, thank you. I, um, I'm a little confused. Is does this the the street outreach program under the police department will lose $25,000 but gain it the same? It's going to the juvenile review board in the community youth services department. So does this the street outreach program loses money, but the JR B gains money, correct? That is correct. Okay, my question is, um, when we when we heard Ms. Rubino yesterday or the day before, the day before, um, she spoke about the the programs that she's in getting involved with and that she has seen a decrease the juvenile review board that recidivism has dropped pretty pretty impressively. And with this new position that we put in to youth services, um, she expects it to drop even more. So I don't know that a move of moving money from the street outreach to juvenile review is is gaining something. I don't know what we're gaining with that. If we're having given that position to youth services, we expect youth recidivism to drop even more. You know, I I would like, I guess I would like to know what your reasoning behind that is and what you hope to gain in with this transfer. If you could be a little more specific with the reason for moving that money, I would appreciate that.
Is that okay, Council President?
Uh, yeah, of course. Go ahead, Mr. Farmer.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President, through you, uh, to the counselor, uh, to in the ninth. Uh, my concern, so the JR B has been effective, right? And it's been effective because we've been able to fellowship and outreach those youth that are first in need. Um, the scope of the work is the same. Again, I I as the counselor who pushed for that original line in the police department as well as being the counselor to push for the increase, um, I want to make sure that we are being equitable in the share of work. And that's why I I pushed up for that line. And now I'm asking to do a transfer so that both workers who are doing this work are respected for the time and effort they do to work with these youth first in need. So I my concern is making sure that the work is done in an equitable way. Um, and also being the person who pushed for this expenditure in the first place, I don't believe it will take around away from wraparound services through you, Council President.
Uh, thank you, Counsel Farmer. Counselor Bonnades, the floor is still yours.
I guess I'm just not, I guess I'm not clear on what who will be who who will be receiving not person, the person wise, um, as far as in the juvenile review board. But when you talk about wraparound services, um, I think about money or services going directly to to the youth. Is that is will that be the case with that with this transfer? Will will that money be? Or I I I'm unclear as to what you're gaining, what is being gained. You said equitable work. We're going to have move some of the work from street outreach to juvenile review so that it's ba more balanced. Again, I'm just not clear. I don't know. Maybe I'm being dense here, but I just not clear what the intention is and what the who the recipient is and what work exactly is being more equitable. The level of detail is not there for me yet.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnades. Mr. Farmer, do you want to respond?
Uh, if I will. Again, this is to make work more equitable, right? Uh, there are many hours that are spent with the youth off the clock. Uh, there are many hours spent with these youth first in need. There's been many hours spent during the pandemic. So I want to be equitable in that sense in terms of the the line that we're talking about. You know, we have not made a contract for scope of services. So as of right now, it is just a sheer dollar amount uh, in the police department. So there's no scope of services and my hope and intention was there to be a scope of services to partner with the city of New Haven to have a part-time person from us to them. That has not been scoped out yet. So as of far, it is just more money and the scope has not changed. So I I'm sure that will come to us and the scope will be worked out. Uh, but until then, I want to make sure of that we're being equitable in the work through you, Council President.
Thank you, Counselor Farmer. I did put my hand up for this. Um, I I think would although I'm supportive of this change, I think at this point in the budget process, I'd like to see this kind of focus in on the, you know, the mill rate and the the larger scope. And I would, um, although I think I'm a no on this today, I I I would encourage the administration and, you know, we can follow up on this to effectuate this transfer with a scope of services with the kind of granular clarity uh, that Ms. Bonnades seems to be requesting. And that way we can, it it's something we could do, um, since it's a transfer. That's something we can do outside of the budget process. I think I'd like to handle it that way. Um, with with the scope of services that you have suggested, counsel, or was suggested by the council from the Fifth District. And in that way, we can kind of focus in on, uh, sort of the larger budget during this part of the process. Uh, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discuss, uh, Counselor Caesar?
Not in the motion. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye.
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 I'm seeing six in favor, all opposed.
Uh, you can give me those in favor then, President McGary, because I was only at five in count.
I believe Mr. Weber was also the you can.
I got his name. I'm I I'm confused to this vote.
All right, should we do a roll call? Roll call, please.
Councilman Austin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Baez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bonnades?
No.
Councilwoman Caesar?
No.
Councilwoman Klaus?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
No.
Councilman Farmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horstley?
No.
Councilman McDowell?
Yeah.
President McGary?
No.
Councilwoman Row Lewis?
No.
Councilwoman Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wentmore?
No.
Seven in favor? Seven opposed, one absent. The tie fails.
All right, uh, the motion fails on the tie. I would just say, though, we'll we we can make this happen within within the operation of the year. Not not, it doesn't have to happen in budget. So I think it's a good idea and you will. We can make this happen through our operations. Mr. Caesar.
I'm going to defer to the council, uh, President Pro Tem. I'm sorry, I didn't hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Caesar. Mr. Mitchell.
Um, thank you. Um, through you, uh, President, uh, could I hear from the finance office what the current tax collection rate is that's uh, informing this this budget?
The current tax collection rate is ninety eight point five percent.
Uh, thank you. Um, I would like to move to raise the tax collection rate to ninety eight point eight percent. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, the tax, the motion on the floor is to increase the tax collection rate from ninety eight point five percent to ninety eight point eight percent. Moved by Ms. Shoemaker, seconded by Mr. Caesar. The Shoemaker as the maker of the motion, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, please. Um, I'm a little concerned, uh, that we may be overtaxing the taxpayers, uh, with some aspects of this budget. And, uh, upping the tax collection rate, I believe, is justified by the, uh, performance of the tax office this year. Um, the fact that we will be pulling out of the pandemic and adjusting this rate upward is also justified by having added a clerk in the tax office. um is also justified by having added a clerk in the tax office. Um I was going to add some other elements to this, but I really don't want to get into the weeds this morning. Um this will increase the revenue line in the um uh the main revenue line in the tax office. And um I think it could help with some of the other revenue lines, but I'm gonna leave it at this because I don't want to be here all morning debating figures on a lot of lines. But I I would appreciate my colleagues supporting a raise in the uh tax collection rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shoemaker. Uh Mr. Caesar has a second. Would you want to speak to that?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McDowell.
Thank you. Uh I think the number was ninety-eight point eight. Is that correct?
Ninety-eight point eight, yes.
Yeah, it seems super specific. Can I ask, do you mind if I ask for the justification for that specific number?
I consulted with the um uh Finance uh Office of the town and they, and Mr. Jackson said that they were comfortable with that increase. And so that's how I landed on that number.
Great. Uh Director Jackson, can you speak a little bit to that and and um, you know, past precedents and is this number something that we know we can achieve?
Uh certainly. But as Council uh woman Shoemaker indicated, uh by passing the part-time account clerk, it frees up more time for uh a a more aggressive uh activity in two particular places, uh back taxes and motor vehicle collections. Um so uh we do think that uh there is an opportunity here. Uh the ninety-eight five uh that was in the budget book uh was a very uh was a very safe number. Um but in uh in times like these, uh we may need to be more aggressive. Uh so I wouldn't, I wouldn't push beyond the ninety-eight point eight. Um but the ninety-eight point eight is a reasonable target for us to try to.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, what is the financial impact of this motion?
Six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
I'm gonna let conversation continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McDowell. Councilor Bonnies?
Um yes, so what will that do to mill rate exactly? So if we, the mill rate increase, um what will that shave off the mill rate increase that we are currently at?
Point sixteen.
Uh it's a point one-six, um just for uh, you know, for for broad base. Um the value of a mill is three point eight four million dollars. That floats a little bit depending on what changes you make, but you can start from a base of three point eight four million. So every addition in revenue um of um three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars reduces the mill rate uh by point one. Uh and every, you know, every revenue increase, every expenditure decrease um moves the mill rate uh at a point one basis for every three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. So this would be a a point one three uh decrease.
Okay, thank you for that. Um I I I, w- we we put in that part-time cashier position as and the and the um the justification of that, it was, it was billed as being a revenue generating position. Um and so I'd like to see revenue generation. Um so I I am going to support this change. Um did, you know, people have been receiving stimulus checks. Um hopefully people are getting back to full employment. And the other thing with the motor vehicle collections is um we have seen um a large influx of um out-of-state buyers in our town. Um and I think we do need to have a program to make sure that those new, that those vehicles from out-of-state are getting registered in-state um and paying taxes to the town for those vehicles. So I think that's a worthy um, a worthy place to to spend the time in our tax department to make sure that those vehicles are um, all out-of-state vehicles are registered in the state and paying taxes to the town. So I am going to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bonnies. Uh Counselor uh Horsley, you, your hand is up. Are are you good now?
Yeah, my questions have been answered. Thank you, President.
Uh thank you. And actually, same for Counselor Wentmore. Your hand was up, Ms. Wentmore. You're okay?
Marjorie asked a question. Thank you.
Okay. Uh and Counselor Farmer?
Thank you, Council President. Um I I will be supporting this. I know the mayor had a plan maybe two years ago that we'd get five hundred thousand dollars out of out-of-state car taxes. So I hope to see that actualized through this action. And if not, we will definitely revisit it and revise the budget through you, Council President.
Uh thank you very much, Counselor Farmer. Um I will just uh put myself on the list here and also chime in. I will be supporting this and ask my colleagues to do so as well. Um Handon, um the residents of Handon are good about paying their taxes. Uh they have been um even through tough times, and I think we can count on them to do so again. Um and so this slight increase in our tax rate means we get to move the mill rate down a little bit and that is a positive thing. Um thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of adjusting the tax collection rate to ninety-eight point eight percent, please indicate by saying or showing aye.
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 Opposed? Extensions? Uh to an opposition, Ms. Renta?
I got, yep.
Thank you. Uh we are back to our main motion. Um and Mr. Caesar, you had your hand up. Uh or actually, Ms. Shoemaker, are you complete?
Uh ye- yes, for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Caesar?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget as amended.
Uh order, this is in essence a a motion to call the question. The motion on the floor already is to approve the budget as amended, so.
Call the question.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Point of clarification, can you make two motions?
Well, the the motion is to approve the budget has been amended. There's gonna call the question. So the first one, I guess, would be on calling the question. Um which uh we had communication last night that it is a two-thirds vote for calling the question. Our practice has been majority. Um and um we could, if we would, make that part of our rules. Uh but with, it is, something is not specifically stated in our rules. Uh we can act as it as a practice or 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 not. Uh but we also have, um it's clear in our rules that if something is not stated in our rules, we defer to Robert's Rules of Order, um which uh does call for a two-thirds vote or a um call of the question. Ms. Grun, have I stated that correctly? Okay.
Yes, when you, um members have the right to speak and debate, and so therefore the higher threshold is important.
Okay, so this is a vote to call the question.
Was was there a second?
I believe Counselor Horsley.
Yes, I seconded.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Awesome.
Did you say Mr. Austin?
I did.
No?
Councilwoman Byers?
No.
Councilwoman Bonnies?
Yes.
Councilman Caesar?
Yes.
Councilwoman Klaus?
I think, I believe Councilwoman Klaus is in transit at the moment and uh going back when she can.
Where we're done. Uh Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilman Farmer?
Us.
Councilwoman Horsley?
Yes.
Councilman McDowell?
No.
President McGary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Row Lewis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shoemaker?
No.
Councilman Weber?
No.
Councilwoman Wentmore?
No.
Councilman Farmer?
No.
Background noise, please unmute yourself uh when you would like to speak. I'm sorry, Ms. Renta, go ahead.
Six in favor, seven opposed, fails.
Okay, uh motion fails. We are back to our original motion, uh which would be the amended um budget. Counselor Bonnies?
Yes, thank you. I just needed the um clarification with the passing of the amendment uh made by Councilwoman Shoemaker, um the new mill rate increase, the new mill rate and then and the mill rate increase, please, through uh through you, President McGary, to Director in the new mill rate from fifty-two-six would be fifty-two point four-four?
Um I'm actually gonna turn that over to uh Mr. Galarza. He has the master spreadsheet.
Okay, I'd just like to know what those new numbers are so that we know exactly what we're voting on. Thank you.
Can anyone hear me? Good morning. Good morning, good morning, council members.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so good, good, good morning. So with the changes uh that were stated, the mill rate would become fifty-two point forty-four. Uh it's a reduction of point one-six from fifty-two sixty.
So the the new, the increase in mill from current is point four-six, correct?
Uh can you repeat that question again?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, from fifty-one ninety-eight to fifty-two forty-four.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
You know, but the mi- but the mill rate increase is point four-six. That is my question.
Oh, okay, uh one-ninety, fifty-one ninety-eight.
Yeah, that is correct. It's uh, it's the point four-six.
Yes, yes. Councilwoman Bonnies, yes, the increase is point four-six from the adopted budget, yes.
From, from, yes, from current, from current mill rate to where we are now, it's a point four mill rate increase, okay, because that's important. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This body is a good clarification. Councilwoman Wentmore?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize I had my hand up.
Thank you. Uh Counselor McDowell?
Thank you. Um I I uh glad we're continuing this conversation. There is more work to be done here. Um I don't think there's too much more. I don't, I don't think we need to be on here much longer. But certainly, we must make a concerted effort to uh address, address additional cost savings that I think are are pertinent. Um I actually, I actually need another minute to do the math on the thing I'm working on, so I'm I'm gonna pass it to my next colleague. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McDowell. Um also, just in terms of process, I would just like to say, uh what we've done in the past is when we get to a place where it seems like all of our changes have been, have been made, moved, voted on, and we seem to have gone to a place with a final number, we'll have a, oh, just sort of a go-around where everyone who wishes to speak uh to uh the budget in general uh can have some time to speak. And then we'll take the final vote. Uh that way, uh everyone has a chance to have their voice heard and express their opinion on on where we're at. Um but it will take us a little while to get there. Uh but that's the, that's the strategy and the thought process moving forward here. Uh Counselor Farmer?
Thank you, Council President. I was just going to ask, because that has not always been what has happened in the past. I just wanted to make sure that uh certain counselors do not hold us hostage from being able to share our thoughts and opinions about the hard work that we all have put in over the many hours and weeks of this process through you, Council President.
Uh thank you. And Counselor Shoemaker?
Uh thank you. Mr. President, uh might I direct a couple of follow-up questions to the Finance Director, please?
Please.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Jackson, could you clarify what revenue line or lines are directly impacted by our vote to increase the tax collection rate? Is it just um the the general tax revenue line or is it other lines in the tax office that are?
Uh no, I think it's a uh, it is all lines, uh but the lines that uh could use more attention uh would be back taxes and motor vehicle.
Oh, well, thank you for that guidance. Um what sort of attention might you recommend for the lines uh relating to back taxes and motor vehicles?
Uh more aggressive collection efforts, which is a, that's a, uh that's a, those are personal activities. And you have to have people managing those files and following up on them. And so it's a matter of time and uh and capacity.
And i- in your opinion, uh is the um the uh increased uh labor in the tax office um equal to uh making those kinds of more aggressive efforts?
It is.
So could you suggest to me, please, um increases in those two revenue lines that you think are reasonable and would be, you know, that we could maybe adjust that tax rate down a little bit more? Do you have suggestions for that?
Uh the council reduced those two lines specifically by one point one million dollars. Um based upon uh the passage of additional staff capacity. Uh if the council were to uh cut those reductions in half um to two seventy-five apiece, uh that should be achievable.
So so are you saying that be, we reduce those, so the motion now would be to increase those by a certain amount above what we had done before?
Uh to increase the revenue, yes.
Increase the revenue in each, in each line by the same amount?
By two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so that is my motion. I would like to move that we increase the revenue lines in uh back taxes and automobile taxes each by, you give me my number again, please?
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in each of those lines. Um.
And for clarity's sake, line one oh one oh eight uh dash zero eight zero two and one zero one zero eight zero eight two S, motor vehicle and back taxes.
Uh thank you, yes, I'm, that is my motion, and I appreciate the detailed clarification of that.
Uh thank you. Is there a second?
Second, second.
By Mr. Austin, um I'm just going to take a note of the hands raised for the main motion.
And. My hand is raised for the amendment, Council President, through you.
Very good. Uh Ms. McDowell, is your hand up for the uh for the amended motion? Or for the?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Uh thank you then. Uh Ms. Shoemaker as the maker of the motion, would you like to speak to it?
Um ye- yes, I I would just say simply that um, again, I'm I'm concerned that if we don't make some of these six-figure adjustments uh and and drive the mill rate down a little bit, that I'm afraid we're going to be overtaxing people this year, and that's why I'm being persistent on this. And I I appreciate um second, and I appreciate folks giving this serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shoemaker. Um it seems Mr. Farmer? Thank you, Ms. Shoemaker, um, it seems Mr. Farmer, I'm sorry, no, Mr. McDowell would be up first.
Thank you, um, I, I'm a little concerned here, because we raised, if somebody could walk me through this, we raised the collection rate, and I thought that was a reflection of some of these changes, I thought it was sort of just one big bucket to catch all these changes, and now we're increasing motor vehicle and back taxes, I, in particular, motor vehicle taxes is what concerns me here, we have consistently looked for ways to drive motor vehicle revenue, tax revenue, and we have been unsuccessful in doing that, and a number of times have come up short on that revenue, so, um, if somebody could walk me through that, I, I'd appreciate it, because, like I said, we've, we've consistently failed to drive motor vehicle tax revenue, despite being creative about how do we do that, um, I would love to drive revenue, I, I'll accept every dollar of revenue that we can possibly justify, um, if it means, you know, a, a more reasonable mill rate, uh, but, but not if it cuts into the hard work that we've done to make a more honest budget. Um, so if somebody could help me, I'd appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Jackson, would you like to speak to, you know, how these different light items work together in the tax office?
Uh, certainly, the collection rate, uh, covers the whole scope of the taxes collected, so supplemental taxes, motor vehicle, current taxes, et cetera, um, the council reduced the revenue in this line by one-point-one million. What Councilwoman Shoemaker's proposal is, is to, uh, instead of reducing it by one-point-one million, reduce it by five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars uh, from the, uh, from the, uh, from the budget proposal, um, but, uh, they, they all, they all, they all work together within the silo of tax collection.
Thank you, does, does that follow up, Mr. McDowell?
There's other hands up, I'm gonna let conversation continue, I'm concerned, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Farmer.
Thank you, Council President, um, direct through you, Council President, to Director Jackson, what was last year's collection rate?
Uh, ninety-eight, uh, the last full collection year, so you have to remember that there's been an extension on tax collection rate, so we're still collecting taxes, even though in prior years we would have been able to give you that hard number, the last good number was ninety-eight point nine percent.
Okay, where are we at currently?
Ninety-eight point seven.
Ninety-eight point seven, and we, through this motion, would be raising it to?
Uh, that, that, that motion has already been passed, moving it to ninety-eight point eight. This, this motion is, this motion is, uh, increasing the anticipated revenue uh, for the two lines, uh, motor vehicle and back taxes by, by a total of five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Yes, but the, the, the total sum of this affects the previous line, correct?
It's, it's a, it's, it's incorporated within the previous line in terms of total rate of collection. Um, but, but each of those is, is broken out into its own category.
Currently, as stated in this new budget, the collection rate would be?
Ninety-eight point eight.
Great, um. Yeah, I, we do not know what the future holds, right? Is there a certain implementation or services or programs that your department will need to be more aggressive on the car taxes, or is it just more time and manpower through you, Council President?
Uh, there are certainly, uh, programs that could be initiated, such as, uh, and, and you know, it gets, it can get to be a little bit, uh, sometimes people don't want to go to the extreme, things like booting cars, uh, things like, uh, essentially hiring private investigators to make sure that out-of-state cars that are here for nine days or more, um, according to Connecticut General Statutes, should be registered and taxed here, um, there are certain efforts that can be utilized, um, but they can, they can, uh, start to cause, um, calls to council members saying you guys are going too far.
Okay, well, I, I am not a fan of a police state, and I, I hope that we, as we're trying to be judicious about bringing down the cost to taxpayers to protect them, that we don't end up potentially doing the opposite, trying to realize these numbers, so I'll let conversation continue, um, but I'm not swayed at the moment through you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Farmer, uh, just wanted to double-check, I had Ms. Row Lewis and Ms. Dolan for the main motion? Not for this motion, thank you, uh, Counselor Bonnades?
No, I'm for this motion, please.
Oh, you are for this motion, all right, then, uh, Counsel Dolan?
Thank you, um, thank you for letting me speak, I would like to say that I am strongly opposed to this motion. Um, we spent a long time going through these numbers, and this was what we decided on, we rolled it back to the department request, and we also looked at the three-year averages, and that's what we based this information on. Um, and with all due respect to, um, Councilwoman Shoemaker, when I voted for the increase in the tax increase, I thought that was going to cover all the revenue items, um, I don't want to create any more revenue line items that I think are too optimistic or unattainable, so I will be voting no for this and for any other sort of revenue increases or, um, negative expense line items, um, thank you.
Thank you, Council Dolan, Counselor Wetmore?
Uh, thank you very much, I'm in agreement with, uh, Councilperson Dolan, I, we padded the budget for years and years, and it never worked in our favor, and I'm not voting to do it this time, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Wetmore, is there further discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote, um, I think maybe with, from the discussion, why don't we go with a roll call, so that we can be clear about, uh, the, the?
Councilman Austin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Baez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bonnades?
No.
Councilwoman Caesar?
No.
Councilwoman Klaus?
No.
Councilwoman Dolan?
No.
Councilman Farmer?
Ash.
Councilwoman Horsley?
No.
Councilman McDowell?
No.
President McGary?
No.
Councilwoman Row Lewis?
No.
Councilwoman Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
No.
Councilwoman Wetmore?
No.
Councilwoman Baez?
Yes.
Councilman Farmer?
Understood.
It fails with three in favor.
I, I guess we could have done it by show of hands, um. We are back to our main motion, I had on my list, uh, Ms. Row Lewis and Ms. Dolan had their hands up. Uh, Ms. Row Lewis, do you still want the main motion?
I'm good.
Actually, I, I, I believe Ms. Shoemaker would have the floor still.
Um, no, I think I'm complete, thank you.
Thank you, and Counsel Dolan, was, did I have your hand wrong, would you like to speak to, you're good, okay, uh, Counselor Baez? Counsel Baez?
I'd like to make a motion to move a package of, um, expense cuts for the total savings of four-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars, six-hundred-and-fifty-three, um, fifty cents.
All right, moved by Ms. Uh, Baez, seconded by Mr. Farmer, I suspect there's a list of items you're gonna have to share with us, Ms. Baez?
There isn't this fine, I will have to show, yes.
Would it be easier for you to share screen at this point, or?
Yes, if, if you would enable that, um, ability for me.
You are? Uh, could you also read through it for those who are joining by phone?
Yes, for sure. Okay, are you guys seeing this, is it big enough?
Yes.
Okay, so on this list is, um, animal control, the description of line is building rental, um, for a cut of forty thousand dollars. The second line is building, um, the clerk typist position for forty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and sixty cents. Community arts and youth, the garden line item for five thousand dollars. Then still in community arts and youth, grant, uh, sorry, special projects, a cut of twenty-five thousand dollars. And finance, um, the grant coordinator, uh, cut of ten thousand dollars to that salary line. Um, in IT, computer equipment, a cut of ten thousand dollars. In the police department, a cut of ten thousand dollars to the traffic stipend. And public works, a cut of seven thousand five hundred dollars to the park special events line. And recreation, the recreation yearly line, a cut of five thousand dollars, and a cut of twenty-five hundred dollars for the food products. And for Board of Ed, a cut of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Baez, I'm just gonna give everyone a moment or two to, uh, either take notes, or take a picture, or, um, otherwise commit this to memory, and, and go back to discussion with, um, with the screen not shared, as, um, it's, it's difficult to see who wishes to, uh, speak, uh, with to share, the screen shared.
Are you guys? When should I stop sharing?
I want to either write this down?
Council President, we could also just take a screenshot on our computers, respectfully.
That would be too. So screenshot, or take a picture, or otherwise commit to memory. And let's go back to conversation, um, and Ms. Baez, thank you, uh, Counselor McDowell. Actually, anything further, Ms. Baez, as the maker of the motion?
I'm compelled to call the question.
You're, you're calling the question?
You got it, go ahead. I don't know, guys, it's like a moral, no, I'm not gonna do it, I'm not gonna do it, okay, go ahead, talk about it, let's talk about it.
Uh, Counselor McDowell?
Thank you, I just, I, is, is clear that a lot of thought went into, uh, this list, um, this package. Um, I appreciate the effort of Councilwoman Baez to look for, um, m- meaningful, uh, efficiencies, while also, um, you know, being mindful of, of the work that we did here, and, and, uh, I, I just appreciate it, it's clear that a lot of thought went into this particular package and, and, uh, going through the budget to find these spots, so thank you for that, I, I look forward to supporting this.
Thank you, Counsel McDowell, Counselor Farmer?
Thank you, Council President, uh, uh, I concur, uh, thank you, Counselor Baez, I believe this is a fair and balanced uh, uh, list of cuts that affect multiple departments, and I think, um, this was well thought out, so I will be supporting this and encourage my colleagues to, uh, save the taxpayers some money through you, Council President.
Counsel Farmer? Uh, just put myself on the list, again, I do, uh, appreciate the effort went into this, but I also, you know, I do think we have a good budget, and these sort of detailed things, you know, we did our work on these lines, and I'd like, I'm just gonna support that, the, the work we've done over the course of these, uh, weeks. Further discussion? Seeing none, uh, I'll call for the vote, um, maybe we should do a roll call, it's hard to tell with these.
Roll call.
Second.
Councilman Austin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Baez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bonnades?
No.
Councilwoman Caesar?
No.
Councilwoman Klaus?
No.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilman Farmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horsley?
No.
Councilman McDowell?
Yes.
President McGary?
No.
Councilwoman Row Lewis?
No.
Councilwoman Shoemaker?
No.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wetmore?
No.
Six in favor, eight opposed.
Yeah, motion fails, we're back to the main motion, uh, Ms. Baez, you still have the floor?
I would really like to find some way to reduce this mill rate just a little bit more, if anyone else, else has an idea, so we can get this mill rate a little bit lower. Please.
Uh, Counselor Farmer?
Yes, thank you, Council President, uh, to those who voted opposed, if there is any particular items in that percy list, if you would like to amend, to save the taxpayers some money, if they could share that with us, I think we can shave a little bit more and uh, refine the great work that we've done thus far through you, Council President.
Thank you, Counsel Farmer, Counsel McDowell?
Is it, would it be, uh, sorry, could the clerk, uh, please restate the vote count on that last vote for us?
The vote count was six in favor, eight opposed, one absent.
So I'd like to, I'd like to separate the question a little bit if I could, um, and these will probably be my, uh, yeah, I'd like to, can we move that package without the BOE reduction? I, I think perhaps we might have lost some people there, um, we have to, we have to do better than this. Um, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to move that same package, but without the Board of Ed reduction, which is still a cost savings, if I'm doing my math right, of about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, is that correct, Councilwoman Baez? Councilwoman Baez, are you okay with me making this motion? Thank you, let's, let's, let's try to do a little better here, thank you, motion's on the floor, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, I accept the, the second, the motion.
Well, why don't we just deal with this as a separate motion?
It's a separate motion, you've already, you've already voted on the prior motion.
Uh, so that?
So you need, you, you need a motion and a second, and then start.
Moved by Mr. McDowell, I'm sorry, the second was?
Mr. Austin.
Thank you, Counsel Austin, uh, discussion, Ms. McDowell's the maker of the motion?
I think we've, we, we know what's on the table, let's, let's go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Shoemaker?
Uh, yes, I was just gonna go ahead and call a question.
Oh, okay, um.
You, if you have unanimous consent, you do not have to vote.
Want to call the question, but you must have absolutely unanimous consent.
If we get that, I'm gonna go buy a lottery ticket. This goes. A rare, rare day indeed. Ms. Shoemaker, perhaps we don't have to call a question, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. But I think we'll do a roll call. So on the package, we'll call it the Bynum package minus Board of Ed.
Exactly what I have written down, too.
Can I request a roll call vote? I think this is gonna be a split vote as well.
President McGary already did, and I am ready. Councilman Austin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bynum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bonnades.
Still a no.
Councilman Caesar.
Nope.
Councilwoman Klaus.
No.
Councilwoman Dolan. Gotcha, yes. Councilman Farmer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horsley.
No.
Councilman McDowell.
Yeah.
President McGary.
No.
Councilwoman Roe Lewis.
No.
Councilwoman Shoemaker.
No.
Councilman Weber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wetmore.
No.
Six in favor, eight opposed, one absent. It fails.
Here we have returned to our main motion. Mr. McDowell, you saw the floor.
Thank you. I'd really like to know from members what it is in this package that they won't support. I think Councilman Farmer already asked this. Let's speak on it. Let us know what you won't support. We'll remove it and we'll pass the rest. We gotta do better here. My original intent was to separate the motion and I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish that process right here. I'd like to make a motion to, to, to change the Board of Ed's increase to two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
If I can speak to that, Mr. President.
Yeah, so you are, the Board of Education presently has an increase of five hundred, reducing that to two hundred and fifty.
Yes, still giving them an increase over the increase that the mayor proposed. So we have the mayor's proposed increase. Then we have our proposed increase. I'd like to bring that back to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. It seems that in our initial conversation, the body was mostly okay with two hundred fifty thousand dollars of an increase. And, you know, in a, in an effort to support our education, especially after a conversation about special education costs, we decided that to help with the cliff that we are going to see in the coming years, that we would offer some extra support. I felt that that was a good move at the time. I felt that that was reasonable and I felt, I felt that it would certainly help us in the future as we climb towards the cliff that we will see in the future. With that said, we have a lot of different ways that we can prepare for that cliff in the future, be it through the grant writer revenue we're talking about, the increases in collections on, on certain other sorts of revenue. There are ways that we can work on preparing for that cliff without burdening taxpayers with it today. My, my final and most important reason for this motion is the reason that I've stated for the last three budget sessions. And I have remarked on it this budget session as well. When we give the Board of Education increases, disproportionate amount of those increases generally end up at sixty Putnam Avenue. They do not end up in the classroom. They do not end up supporting teachers, paras, other staff and faculty, administrators in the buildings. It ends up going to sixty Putnam. When we talk about supporting education, let's support our teachers, let's support our students. The Board of Education, expecting this increase, had a conversation this week to add a superintendent, an assistant superintendent, add a principal, and to increase some executive salaries, including the HR director. I do not feel that this is appropriate. Those increases add up to more than the two hundred fifty thousand dollars that I'm asking to reduce today. I would like to make a clear and direct statement as we did last year, that this is not the appropriate way. This is not what we're looking for. So let's give them an increase over what the mayor proposed. Let's do that. Let's do it reasonably and let's be clear that those increases are meant to help our students, to help our teachers, our paras, other staff and faculty, and not to go to sixty Putnam increasing executive positions and adding executive positions that quite frankly, we have a great executive team over there. I don't, I don't, I don't think that Mr. Malillo, Mr. Ariola, they all seem to be doing a great job assisting Superintendent Goller. Let's support that team, but increasing that team right now is just not the time. So I appreciate you all giving me the opportunity to express my support for this motion. I know that was a longer justification, but I think, I think it was important that I explained and grounded that, that, that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McDowell. Counselor Farmer.
To be bold and brief, thank you through you, Counsel President. I've stated numerous years before, support education, support special education. We know that the increases go to the Board of Ed at sixty Putnam. I'm hoping that we can come to consensus on this. We are the fiscal authority, right? I'm not gonna micromanage departments on what they're supposed to do, but we are in a financial crisis and if any other department had done this, we would have cut them, right? So I'll leave it at that through you, German.
Thank you, Counselor Farmer. Counsel McDowell.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I know that, you know, most of us have made our minds up about whether we want to see the five hundred or whether we want to see, like, I think a lot of us know whether or not we'll stomach any cuts in this, in this area, which again, it's not really a cut. They've never been given this money. This is an increase. We're reducing an increase. If there is anyone on the fence who would support a lower number, I'm asking you to speak up now. Let's not make another motion. I'm not gonna do the whole thing that I've done in years past. Or it's two fifty, two hundred, hundred. I'm not gonna do that this year. We've been here. We're adults. If, if there's a lower number that anybody is on the fence and would support, please speak up now. I would support a friendly if it gets some consensus and gets us moving on this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDowell. I did put myself on the list. I just, you know, I'm not supportive. You know, we've done our deliberations. I think, you know, today is for focusing in on the mill rate. And I certainly, I don't know if anybody is from the Board of Education listening in, but I will certainly communicate with them some of the feelings that we've expressed today about, you know, our expectations when, when funding the Board of Education that go as much as possible to frontline workers. But I, so I, so I really can't support this or other changes. You know, things like the tax collection rate and things like that, where you can adjust a little to, you know, work on the mill rate. But I don't just wanna go back and be deliberate, individual items. And that's just where I'm at today. Thank you. Further discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for the vote. We should probably go to the roll call on this one as well. Ms. Renta.
I'm, I'm gonna clarify the motion because he said increased by two fifty. But we're no longer going by the mayor's proposed. It's gonna be a decrease of two fifty from the five hundred that it was already increased to.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to clear that up. It's already been increased by five hundred thousand. You're decreasing two fifty from that. On our side, you have those numbers as an increase.
I'm changing the increase to two hundred fifty thousand. So the increase right now on the mayor's budget.
Well, there is no increase because it's already been increased to five hundred. On our side where we do the math, it's already increased by five hundred thousand.
Right. My motion was to alter that increase from five hundred to two hundred fifty. So I didn't have the exact number. I didn't wanna make a motion of like Board of Ed to X amount of dollars. I don't have that number and, you know, in my mind, so.
Point is, right now, they show that they're up by five hundred thousand dollars on.
Two hundred fifty.
So this is a decrease.
A decrease of our increase. Yes, yes. Reduce our current line by two hundred fifty thousand, which is an increase of two hundred fifty thousand from the mayor's proposal.
Councilman Austin.
Yes, I understand it.
And that's a yes vote, vote. Councilwoman Bynum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bonnades.
No.
Councilman Caesar.
No.
Councilwoman Klaus.
No.
Councilwoman Dolan.
Yes.
Councilman Farmer.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horsley.
No.
Councilman McDowell.
Yeah.
President McGary.
No.
Councilwoman Roe Lewis.
No.
Councilwoman Shoemaker.
Yes.
Councilman Weber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wetmore.
No.
Seven, seven in favor, seven opposed, one absent. It's a tie. It fails.
All right, the motion fails on the tie. Mr. McDowell, you saw the floor.
Thank you. Not gonna, not gonna waste anybody's time. A bunch of people that are complaining about mill rates aren't interested in doing anything about it. So let's speak on it. What you guys wanna see cut? Some people are putting their money where the mouth is and some people aren't. So if you've been complaining about mill rates for months.
Let's stay focused on the numbers and not.
We are staying focused on them. With all due respect, Mr. President.
People's motivation, so we can just speak to number.
Our motivation here has to, we have to reconcile that motivation. We either have to be, like, if we've said that we are not interested in seeing an increase in the mill rate or, or at least one this large, then we need to, we.
Mr. McDowell, you have a motion to make?
I don't necessarily have to make a motion. I could speak to the motion on the floor. This, there is, there is work that can still be done, so people need to speak on where they can stomach the cuts, cuz this is, I'll be honest, I'm gonna support this budget regardless. It's more honest than the mayor's. So if we have this budget, this is our final budget. I'll still support it. But we do not have to be sending this high of a bill to residents. It's, it's not necessary, so let's fix it. Thank you.
I'm trying to raise my hand and I can't front my phone. Just wanna put that out there.
I'm sorry. Why don't you go ahead then, Ms. Klaus, as you, I know it is difficult when you're on the phone.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. It's interrupt, but mine's very quick. I just, you know, I don't wanna raise the mill rate anymore. I don't like where it is, but this is the work that we did and this is where the mill rate landed. You know, just like every year, it's not, there's a lot of things in this budget that I don't love. There's a lot of things I do like. But we are where we are right now and that's because it's the work that we have done and I think we need to stick with that. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Klaus. Counsel Farmer.
Thank you, Counsel President, through you. You know, but we are still doing the work today, right? The budget just didn't fall here. The mayor's proposed budget was given to us every year. We are in a hostage negotiation on bringing it close to that line. We can't afford to do that this year. So I am going to make a motion to do the board, to, to add the cut for the BOE, all the other cuts, and to subtract the animal shelter and the police chief stipend and see if we have the appetite to do that. We need to find cuts. We are going into austerity budget. It is only because of COVID-19 that we are not in the marb currently. So let's get to cutting. I don't need to say anything else to it. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we'll call this the Bynum package minus BOE, minus stipend, minus.
No, I'm, wow. I was gonna add about BOE.
Could you just state it again then, Mr. Farmer, cuz I'm not, wanna be sure we, we know exactly what it is.
I, I wanted to go with adding BOE, adding everything, subtracting the, the the forty thousand for animal shelter and the ten thousand for the police chief. Yep, I feel the same way.
Counselor Farmer.
Say that again, Counsel.
Can you please repeat that?
Cool. I apologize, audio difficulties. The, everything minus, everything in the Bynum package minus the ten thousand dollar raise for the police chief and the forty thousand dollars for the animal shelter.
Just a point of clarification, it's not a ten thousand dollar raise. That was the stipend for traffic commission.
Okay, the ten thousand dollars more for the police chief.
Are you removing that from the package?
Correct. If it's gonna get us the votes, let's see what it does.
Okay, so Ms. Renta, do you have, are you clear on what's, what's the vote is?
I believe it's the whole Bynum package minus the fifty thousand dollars in the two different lines.
Correct.
Mr. Farmer, would you like to speak more on that?
Nope.
Further discussion, the motion, which is the Bynum package minus those two items. And, and minus Board of Ed.
No, the Board of Ed's in there.
Board of Ed's in there, okay.
Wishful thinking.
I'm just trying to be clear here.
It's just a fifty thousand dollar reduction off of the Bynum package, basically.
Ms. Bynum.
Um, I will reiterate the point that was already made that if there is a different way that someone will propose that we cut the mill rate, I were, I just, is there any way else to get this down? Obviously, I'm gonna vote yes on this. But the, the basis of this is that we do not wanna wait until we make adjustments to our budget later in the year. Because as was stated by multiple council people, this is very hard for our residents to stomach. There was a raise in the people's, in the amount of everyone's assessment in certain neighborhoods. And this on top of a mill rate increase, it seems very callous almost to say we can't do anything else. Let's, if there's any other kind of addition to, to, to make this mill rate a little bit more stomachable, I beg you guys to talk on it. And again, I'm voting yes on this.
Thank you, Ms. Bynum. Ms. Bonnades.
Can I get a, just a mill rate number on the, what decrease in the mill rate will this package that's currently on the floor achieve? You know, we're, we're talking, I don't know, what are we at now? Hundred and something thousand? It's not nothing. I'm not saying it's nothing, but we, in order to make moves, we need big ticket items. We had to add two million dollars more onto one point nine nine million more into debt service. I think the problem here is debt. Debt, not paying our bills, not paying our obligations, not paying our pension. You know, we're, we're suffering under the decisions that were made decades ago and they're here with us now. This little horse trading package isn't gonna move the needle. And I'm not, again, I'm not saying it's nothing and I do appreciate the hard work from Counselor Bynum and others to put this together, but the needle is not gonna move. Big tickets, what's baked into the pie here is decades of mismanagement. That's all I've gotta say.
Ms. Bonnades, Mr. Farmer.
Yeah, I, you know, yes, there has been generational neglect. We are not gonna solve that. Um, we are not gonna solve that right here and now. Um. But we have more room to make cuts, right, there's few places to cut from, and it's obvious that counselors have different priorities, this seems like a consensus of what our priorities are to get there. Um, playing chicken with the mayor, uh, I personally am not doing that this year. Um, the negative press affects how much money we can bond out, it affects how much money we can use. So this is actually a huge savings, because if we don't vote on this and pass this and get something demonstrable, and the mayor plays chicken with vetoing this. I promise, I will hold us accountable and equally put out as just as much bad press. And that will affect how much money we are able to bond, because we have shown we are unable to, uh, uh, to set the priorities for the, uh, uh, the community to be responsible for the money, so this is a huge savings. Either we vote on this or come up with other things, let's get it done, let's do it today, through you, Council President.
Uh, thank you. I did put myself on the list, um, and I just wanted to say, there's a couple, you know, things, one, there's a lot of truth to what Counselor Bonnades was saying. Um. You know, this, the issues that we have were decades in the making, it, um, you know, when we talk about, uh, revenue issues that we've had, we have had revenue issues. But it all stems from issues back in, you know, decisions that were made literally in the nineties and, and have just sort of come, come all the way to now. Um, and although it's a very good thing, our, you know, we offended the, funded the pension at a hundred percent, first time in history. Uh, but we also have an issue that, um, it's just, it's a lot of money, it's a much larger portion of our um, budget than it should be, so, you know, having said all that. Um, it is also with, you know, specifically as Spies asked about other things. There are other things we can look at, you know, we could look at the medical line, but that, that makes me very nervous to, uh, make reductions to the medical line. Um, usually, you know, that turns out okay, we've had, had times when we've cut the medical funding, and it works out okay, but it is, you know, it makes me a little nervous to think about that, uh, there's that townwide savings line, um, that, you know, we reduced. Um, we could recognize the attrition there and bring that line back up, and that would move the needle a little bit on the mill rate. Um, but there's, you know, there's reasons that we, we chose to do what we do with that line. So I'm just kind of looking, you know, when I look around, we made the, the budget a lot tighter last year, and that's reflected now. Um, and, you know, the, the mayor's budget, I think we have a better budget. But the mayor's budget itself did not include some of the, you know, some wide game-changing items that we could change right now, and that's why I think we're, we're kinda struggling. So, um, so I mean, if someone wants to look at the medical line or that townwide savings line. You know, those are, you know, things we consider, but we did a lot of debate, we did a lot of deliberations. Yes, it's still active, and we did, we changed the tax collection rate, uh, we could have changed the, the rate for back taxes and motor vehicles, um, but, you know, once we get into, you know, individual lines that are also about you know, that, that we talked over for a long time, that I, I start to have issue with that. So, um, that's where I'm at, and Mr. Austin.
I, I appreciate the conversation about, um, we, we've worked on a budget, we've gotten to something that we all pretty much feel is better than where we were with the mayor's budget, because it faces the faces a lot of facts and it doesn't hide things, but I support trying to find the better mill rate for the people of Hampton, so I would support any of the cuts that are being put forward, because I, I feel they're modest. Um, even the Board of Ed reduction in the increase was still modest, they still got a game there. So I think we should, um, somehow, if we don't consider that. Um, and exactly, Mr. President, what line, I'm looking at the book, what line are we speaking about for medical? What department, what line?
Age one fifteen is the first line in expenditures.
It's not my intent to open up budget deliberations on all of these things, but we can look at these larger items that we can have some conversation about to say that we are, we're still moving towards giving the people the best mill rate.
The medical self-insurance line.
Yeah.
And to, to, to speak to your concern, Mr. Austin, you know, we, we could discuss that some and ask, um, Mr. Jackson, you know, my understanding is they're given a range for the medical line, and then, uh, they pick from that range, so there, there is some wiggle room there, but as I, I think I mentioned before, you know, uh, it is always, it's a changeable line, um, and, uh, you know, it's insurance. Um, it, it does, there's a certain amount of risk entailed, you know, when you're funding your insurance, cuz you don't know what's gonna happen. Um, and as anyone, you know, as I stated publicly many times, I tend to be rather risk averse. But if we did want to look at a line where we can make a change that's not affecting direct operational, uh, you know, departmental functions. This is one. Um. Even though, I don't go to the casino, you know, I'm just, that's just the way I am, but we could. That is one where there could be perhaps some level of margin of error.
So I might understand that there's a estimate that we have here, and we've selected the mid of the estimate.
That is correct. Um, but how about, while we finish up the, the Mr. Farmer's, uh, package, or the bias package à la Mr. Farmer, and then we can, may, we could go back and we can look at, um, medical. Um. Anything on, on the package, uh, Mr. Austin?
On the, the, the motion on the floor from.
Yeah, I have a motion on the floor.
No.
Um, hands are up and wings down, is that, cuz we'll be voting on the bias as amended by uh, Farmer package, and then we'll move on to medical, very good.
What a clarification, can you just restate the bias amendment now, thank you.
It's the Farmer amended the bias package, uh.
I got it.
Is that Ms. Renta?
I got it, it's the bias package minus the ten thousand traffic stipend, minus the forty thousand for building rentals and animal control building rentals. And when you take that fifty thousand off of Ms. Baez's total, it's a reduction of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars sixty cents. Does that sound right, Mr. Farmer? It's not there.
Ms. Renta, you are a godsend, that is correct, thank you.
But that's the motion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Renta, thank you.
And, and perhaps we can have, we, we, we can be unanimous in appreciating Ms. Renta, that's for sure. Uh, are we ready to vote on this?
I'm ready for a roll call.
Okay, let's do a roll call, uh, the bias package as amended by Mr. Farmer.
Mr. Austin, or Councilman Austin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Baez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bonnades.
No.
Councilman Caesar.
No.
Councilwoman Klaus.
No.
Councilwoman Dolan.
Yes.
Councilman Farmer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horsley.
No.
Councilman McDowell.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Roe Lewis.
Mmm, that is so good. Hmm.
I'm just gonna mute, mute off.
Why?
Come back if, uh. Please unmute yourself.
Councilwoman Roe Lewis.
No.
Councilwoman Shoemaker.
No.
Councilman Weber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wetmore.
No.
Did you get Gary's?
Councilwoman Gary.
Yes.
Seven in favor, eight opposed, fails.
Okay, for purposes of, I, I put my, uh, hand on list of purposes of discussion. I'm going to make a motion, uh, to reduce the medical line, uh, one four zero four zero zero two one four, medical self-insurance, uh, by five hundred thousand dollars, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Seconded by Ms. Shoemaker, uh, I'll just, you know, speak to her briefly, saying, you know, there, there is a bit of wiggle room. Uh, it is, it is a line that does make me nervous, because it is so changeable through the years, um, but if we are looking at I'll ask Mr. Jackson to speak on, to speak on his level of comfort with some, a maneuver like this, and to the past, um, the actuals in the past. Uh, and, and anyone's remembrance, when we have made adjustments to this line, um, how has it worked out? Um, so, Mr. Jackson, if you could kinda speak us through how you found the number, uh, if you would be comfortable. I shouldn't say how you found the number, well, how you chose the forty-six million seven hundred fifty thousand, and then, um, how your level of comfort with making change in the history of the line, when changes have been made, thank you.
As you, uh, as you, uh, stated, uh, Mr. President, uh, we do receive a range from our consultants, uh, Brown and Brown. This year, that range was a low of about forty-four-two and a high of about forty-eight-two. So we went down the middle, um, a little on the high side, uh, to be responsible. Um, when I first came into this building in two thousand and five, uh, the Medical Self-Inurance Fund was running an eight million dollar deficit, uh, due to, to the town of eight million dollars. Um. So historically, the town had not appropriately funded the account. Uh, the account is in, uh, it is, i- it's a, it's a positive account right now. Uh, but you're absolutely right, and this is a strange year, because we don't know what medical coverage has been deferred. So there was an, uh, th- there were some estimates made by our consultants as to what would have happened this year, that's been pushed off into next year, and that's incorporated into the number. Um, but you're absolutely right, uh. It's a, it's a very difficult, um, item to estimate.
Mr. Jackson, would you be comfortable with a five hundred thousand reduction in that line?
I would.
Thank you. Uh, that's all I have for right now, I did just get a little heart palpitation there, uh, Council McDowell.
Uh. I. I think my end, my question was answered, I'll let conversation continue, thank you.
Thank you, Council Farmer.
Sorry about that, Council President, um, yeah, I, I will support his motion, I think there's some wiggle room. Um. But if there's not, we have to find five hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts. Um, that may include laying off physicians, I hope the council is ready to stomach that, if that happens. Hopefully it won't, um, the numbers seem good, uh, I want us to be cognizant of that before we make this vote through you, Council President.
Uh, thank you, Council Farmer, uh, Counselor Austin.
Thank you, Council President, um, there's a, there's a couple of things here, when organizations deal with estimates and there's ranges given, most organizations, you book the low end of the range, so that's, that's the minimum. When, uh, Director Jackson is, uh, questioning to you through the chair, um, the history of the town, I don't know what they actually booked in the past when they got these ranges. So when you said that it's overfunded, that could be because of the transactions at that point in time didn't meet the range at all, so I don't know to say that if they're, the prior councils were being prudent or administrations were being prudent by looking at it and saying, we're at least gonna book the range given to us and cover that, or were there additions added on? So, but I do know that when we're dealing with estimates in the accounting world, that you book the low end of the range. And you at least book the low end of the range, if you have information that says that your actuals are going to exceed that, then you start to cover those, do we have any information that the actuals are going to come, are gonna exceed the forty-four that we were given as the low end of the range?
Uh, no, those claims have not been incurred, so, uh.
But do we have any past actuals that exceed forty-four, cuz that was the low end of the range?
Uh, we do not, uh, but the range was extended, uh, because of the concept of deferred care.
Okay, and so the low end of the range is forty-four, and we're already booking four, forty-six, so we have two million dollars of prudence built into this, we can have a five hundred thousand dollar reduction of this and still say we were still being prudent.
Uh, that is why I responded to, uh, President Harry with, uh, with that response.
I understand that, and I just want the council to understand that from that entire perspective of how we do, how organizations deal with estimates and the costs that come along with them. You normally start with the low end of the range to say, that's the number that you have to book, because your experts have given that to you. And anything and over and above that, you're exceeding that, so that's the wiggle room that we have here. So there's really more than five hundred thousand dollars of wiggle room here. So with the three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar equalling point one mil per did you say, point one mil? I would be in support of the five hundred thousand dollars and discussion on any, uh, one who would like to talk about raising that somewhat to seven hundred, but definitely in support of five hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Austin, uh, Councilman McDowell.
Thank you, uh, I'm, I appreciate this motion being made, cuz it was actually gonna be my next motion, and I wasn't entirely confident on the number. So, uh, I knew that there was wiggle room here, uh, did a lot of work in the last couple days to try to, try to work on that and figure out what would be a good number, um. Oh, and, and like I said, I wasn't so confident on the number, so I appreciate, uh, Councilman Austin, you've, you've really helped ground that conversation. And I appreciate your expertise on the matter, I would support either motion, um, I would, I would support the five hundred, the seven hundred, so. Um, if there's support on the rest of the body for the seven hundred, I would, I would make a friendly request. Is there, can I get head nods if there's support for seven hundred? Let me see, one head nod, and that, I don't wanna, I don't want this, I don't want this motion to fail, because we move it up. Um, you know, I'm gonna make a friendly request, I, I'm gonna make a friendly request, if it fails, we'll go back to the five hundred, can I make a friendly request for, to move it up to seven hundred?
Okay, uh, no, thank you.
Okay, uh, I'll leave the motion be then, uh, perhaps we can make a separate motion for an additional two hundred and see what the will of the body is there, thank you.
Thank you, Council Bonnades.
Okay, thank you, um. Uh, thank you, um, Councilman Austin, for the, for the, the mechanics of the, you know, accounting with budgets and estimates and ranges, um. However, I, I, I know, I, I'm living the, the pent-up demand for medical care, surgical care. Um, it's, it's beyond anything we've seen in terms of, um, you know, getting people in to be seen, and, um, I would rather have this extra wiggle room and, and, um, budget more than we need, and at the end of the year, say, we've got a little extra here. What, what other parts of the budget need help, um, but I, I don't like, I don't wanna cut this because it may, it may backfire, if, if our, um, town employees, um. see that we're taking money from their healthcare, medical coverage because we think they might not go to the doctor or to, you know, have their healthcare looked after, it may backfire in exceeding medical care. I know we have the HSA now, and it's, people are a little bit more prudent with the way they use their healthcare dollars. But I have to say, I'm seeing huge demands for medical care in all of our offices. All of the offices that, that we work with directly are, and we're all local, right here in Hampden and environment around, towns around us. They're jammed. So, I don't think we're going to see the low side of this range. I think we're going to be in the middle or the high end of this range, and that's just my personal experience. So, I'm not going to be in favor of moving this number. I think we went right down the middle, and I think it's prudent if things, if things don't, if people, you know, turns out we don't, we'll have a little extra money in that line item. I just don't, I just don't feel comfortable taking money out of that line at this point where it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valanis. Ms. Schumaker.
Thank you. I'm very much in favor of this. Based on the description that we got from the advisor and based on Mr. Jackson's comfort with it, and especially based on Mr. Austin's reflections on how these budgeting processes go. The deferred demand is already baked into the range. We're still going to be above the low end of that deferred demand range. So, that's comfortable. The, the, the risk analysis here for me is that if we don't make this cut, the bigger risk is that we're going to overtax the people of Hampden. I am laser-focused on that this morning, and that is why we have to look at these large lines because we can't impact this mill rate unless we do that. So, I'm very comfortable supporting this. And I ask my colleagues to really reflect, and I have done a lot of work on this for the last couple of days. I ask my colleagues to reflect on the risk analysis with this particular line. I think we've covered the medical expense risk, and, and I would rather not overtax the residents at this point. Give this modest cut to this line, low that, lower that mill rate a little bit more. And should we overshoot on this, we can cover that, and we would cover that because there will be savings in other lines. But this is one that can help on that mill rate. So, I'm four-square behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Schumaker. Counsel Horstli.
So, one of the reasons we're in
Counsel Horst, you were, were, could you restate? We lost you there for a minute. In fact, you seemed frozen.
We are, he's frozen.
Counsel Horstli, your Wi-Fi seems to be failing.
Believe it's on the freeze.
I'm back. Am I back?
Yes. You're still frozen, though.
Turn off your video, Valerie, and that'll boost your audio.
Oh, there you are.
Oh, there you are.
Internet issues. Yeah, so I think the goal of what we've been working towards in the past few years is really getting our fund balance increased. That is what we need to do to solidify the fiscal stability of our town. If we, and we've done many, many changes this year and last year while I've been on council to make that happen. And we do expect that we will have a positive fund balance at the end of this budget. And that is a major, major win for the work that we've done. If we cut this line and we end up having all these people go in and go to the doctor, as they should because they've been not doing it because of COVID, then we're going to reduce the amount in our fund balance, and that's just going to keep us in the same location we've been. And while I don't want to raise taxes at all, I also understand that not raising taxes since probably before I was born is the reason we're here today. And so, I am going to oppose this because I think any extra we have in this line can go into our fund balance, and it can help us move Hampden forward. And so, while I don't want to, I'm going to say no to this.
Thank you, Counsel Horstli. Counsel McDowell.
Just, just wanted to clarify. There was something said earlier, and I want to, I want to make sure we clarify for the body. This, under no circumstances, would restrict or reduce anyone's ability to access healthcare or go to the doctor. That's, that's correct, right? Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, do you just want to clarify that, or?
That is correct. The, the medical benefits are guaranteed by contract.
Thank you.
I mean, just to clarify, I believe if, 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 if the worst did happen and we did go into deficit, we would have to yeah, people get their healthcare. They don't not get their healthcare. We just have to pay for it. I do put myself on the list. I am joy, I am very risk averse, and it, it is difficult. Mister, the counselor from the seconds, you know, talking about prudence is very thoughtful. I'm still just, I, it's I prefer safety, and I understand, you know, the, the mill rate is, is high, and, 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 you know, I'm the one who made the motion so we could talk about it. But I'm just not sure I can, I can come down on this one either. I want to make sure that the town is fiscally sound. Further, that's all I really have to say. Further discussion? All right, while we take the vote, we probably should do a roll call on this. Ms. Renta?
Okay, Councilman Austin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Valanis?
No.
Councilwoman Caesar? Councilwoman Klaus?
No.
Councilwoman Dolan?
No.
Councilwoman Farmer?
Pass.
Councilwoman Gary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horstli?
No.
Councilwoman McDowell?
Yes.
President McGary?
No.
Councilwoman Roe Lewis?
Pass.
Councilwoman Schumaker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wetmore?
No.
Councilwoman Farmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Roe Lewis?
No.
Seven in favor, eight opposed, fails.
I think we are then back to the main motion, Mr. McDowell.
If my understanding of Robert's rules is correct, either side of tied motion can make a motion or reconsider in the same meeting. Given that we now have our full membership here in present, I would like to make a motion to reconsider a vote that failed. That motion is a motion to reduce the Board of Education budget by two-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars to a still quarter-million-of-dollar increase over the mayor's proposed budget. Can I have a second on that motion?
First, let's check in with Ms. Grun.
Thank you.
I think it's the prevailing side. I have a feeling Ms. Grun is going to check this out. Twelve fifty-one, so maybe a little comfort break here. And, well, we should start thinking about lunch, I guess, if we're, we're just going to continue on. But, so why don't we take a brief break? Why don't we say fifteen, so Ms. Grun has a few minutes to think and also take a break?
Betty, did you have a nice Friday evening?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, well, you probably heard that the public hearing was very short. We read stuff, we heard from a few people. But what did you do? Was it a family thing?
No, we had friends from out of town come in.
Oh, nice.
Came in special for Friday night.
Yeah.
So they couldn't stay overnight. So
Yeah.
They had to do that.
Well, good for you. I'm glad you had a nice time. It's it's nice because people are feeling like they can visit again.
Right. And I haven't seen them in a long time, so it was really good.
Oh, good. Good. Glad for you. Oh, sure. A couple of weeks ago, we had a couple over for dinner. Just, you know, and we had face to face in a long time, and it was just a lovely refreshing experience. So.
Oh, that's good. I think we need that once in a while, especially with this budget season.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So good. I'm glad you had a nice time. I was thinking about you.
Thank you.
Counselor Wetmore, how is your husband doing?
He's doing okay. He's holding his own. That's all I can say. Right now, he's having a good day. So that's that's a plus. Thank you very much, Justin, for asking.
No, no problem. Good to hear.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't it's one oh five when we come back out of recess. Give folks a minute to get themselves reseated and things turned back on. Ms. Grun, how are we doing?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. And with due respect to Councilor, Councilor McDowell. I don't find anything that would change my opinion that someone who voted on the prevailing side on a tie is any different than my memo that I, you know, redistributed the other night. So if you voted on the prevailing side, you may bring up a motion to reconsider. I, I, you know, I, if anybody has anything other than that for me to review, I'm happy to do it. But based on the information that I have at this time, a tie, the motion failed. If you voted on the prevailing side, you may make a motion to reconsider.
Disappointing clarification. What is the prevailing side on a tie?
Okay, so same analysis as the other night, the motion failed. Okay, when, when, when there's a tie, the motion failed, the motion doesn't continue.
Be the side who voted in opposition of the motion. That's what we're saying. That is the prevailing side.
Yes. Okay, Mr. McDowell had the floor when we left for recess. Mr. McDowell? Well, he's probably still making his way back to his computer. So we're up there is Mr. McDowell, Mr. McDowell, he's still on the floor.
Has there been a ruling? I'm sorry, I was feeding the dog.
Uh, yes, there is, there is a prevailing side and a tide. It is the, you know, the nose. Because on a tie, the motion failed.
Uh, okay, um, let's take that up another time. Um, but if that is the ruling of our permanentarian, I respect it. That's what stands at this moment. Um, I'd like to make a motion out of respect that are, is our full membership here at the moment? No, it appears we've lost some members. So I'll hold. Uh, I, in the meantime, I will make a motion. Now, the motion to reduce medical self insurance by five hundred thousand dollars, that failed, correct?
That's correct.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce medical self insurance by two hundred fifty thousand. Let's just go straight to a vote.
Okay.
We know what we're doing here. Thank you.
Okay, so the present motion is to reduce the medical self insurance by two hundred and fifty thousand. There are discussions. Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Let's see if we can do this by hands. Please just leave your hand up when you very clearly signify with a thumbs up or a thumbs down. And leave it up for several seconds. And if you are on your phone and need to call in, please unmute yourself, state very clearly, and maybe once or twice. So all in favor of reducing the medical self, the medical line by two, self insurance by two hundred thousand? Okay, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, six.
Counting six.
Uh, Council, Councilman Weber, did I hear you call out an aye?
You did, I'm a aye.
Okay. Four, five, six. I have six. Mr. McGary?
Yes, thank you. And opposed, nay.
Nay. No for Kristen.
I'd like to call a roll call. I saw a member vote twice. There's another member that didn't vote.
No, we lost.
Okay, oh, but it seems pretty clear. The numbers were five, six. And actually, if we could, we're, we are attempting these. If you could say your name and then iron a, that that would probably help.
Councilman Austin?
Yes, in favor.
Councilwoman Baez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vonades?
Nope.
Council?
No.
Councilwoman Cloud?
No.
Councilwoman Dolan?
No.
Councilman Farmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gary is no longer with us. Councilwoman Horsley?
Pass.
Councilman McDowell?
Yes.
President McGary?
No.
Councilman Monroe Lewis? Gotcha as a no. Maker?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Counselor Wetmore?
No.
Wait, did we have a pass? We had a pass.
Counselor Horsley passed.
Horsley?
Uh, no.
Six in favor, a opposed, one absent, fails.
All right, we are back to the main motion. Counselor McDowell, you still have the floor?
Yeah, I mean, I've already said it. Um, uh, at this point, um, it's clear to me that there is no stomach for any cuts of any kind. We've, we've tried. Which is unfortunate. I'd like to hear, like I said, I'd like to request of my colleagues who have complained of the mill rate, I'd like to hear from them their suggestions for cuts. Lot of things have been brought to the table today, so, um, let's do it and get it done. Thanks.
I do think if we are approaching a place where we're ready to vote on the budget, people can speak their opinions and their minds and their thoughts. At that point in time, we'll just go around. People can do. If there are further motions, Mr. Farmer?
Now, are we going to, I, I, I won't make any motions. Are we gonna go to that time now?
Well, I'm waiting to see if there's any further motions to make any changes to the budget.
Cool, just put me
I'm sorry, Mr. Farmer, I didn't catch that last part.
If you can put me in the queue for the latter, I'd appreciate that, Counsel President.
Further discussion on the main motion, which is the budget. Uh, Mr. Jackson, could you give us an update as to where we are after the, I believe the only adjustment made today so far has been the tax collection rate? If you could just give us an update because it's been a little while.
Fifty-two point four-four.
Fifty-two point four-four and the total number? Um, you know, dollars?
Uh, two hundred and sixty-one million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars.
No sense?
No sense.
Zero, zero. Thank you, sir. Just checking.
No sense.
Any further discussion on our main motion? Uh, Councilwoman Wetmore?
Uh, thank you. I'll be voting no on this. I think it's a very risky move to move our tax collection rate up. We didn't
I miss wet more. We, that was voted on earlier.
And can I still speak my mind as to why I'm not voting on the budget?
Oh, yes. I didn't mean, I just thought we're not voting on the tax collection rate right now.
Okay, then I'll, I'll wait. Thank you.
No, you can, you can speak it.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. Raise my hand now.
Okay, um, so
Yes, to that number.
Well, hold on, I'm just gonna mute doll for one second. Uh, we're getting some background. I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, you have something to?
Uh, yes, the, the number I gave you, uh, was when we were contemplating, uh, the cut in medical. Uh, the total budget number continues to stay at two sixty-two, four eighteen, nine fifty-five.
Two sixty-two, four eighteen, nine six five.
Nine five five.
Nine five five, thank you. And still no sense?
Still no sense.
And but the mill is still fifty-two point four-four.
That is correct.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Wetmore, uh, the, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, like I said before, I'm voting against this budget. I think we're making a very risky move to up the tax collection rate. What I think we're doing is just fooling ourselves. I hate to see us going into a deficit because we did this as a last minute thing. Um, I also think the time to make substantial cuts was while we were deliberating the budget. Um, and that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wetmore. Mr. Caesar?
I totally agree with Councilman Wetmore on the, on the idea of the cuts that would be proposed. I think we did all this work over the last couple of weeks. It really should have been done during that time, not now. I'm also not happy about the mill rate change as well, too. We were discussing the fact that, you know, we were happy with where we were at, and now all of a sudden that gets thrown at us. I'm, I'm gonna be listening very carefully to the debate over the next five minutes to see where I'm going with this, but definitely not happy about things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caesar, Mr. McDowell.
Thank you. I, I would, I would disagree strongly with that. I, I, I believe that we, over the past couple of months, have deliberated a budget line by line based on what we felt was best for each individual line. We are then left with a budget total and a mill rate that we need to discuss, and that is the role for today, and it has always been the role of today. When you get that mill rate, you decide, okay, let's see what happens. I can't be the only one who's added a ton of, of stuff to my car online, looked at the bottom line and then said, oh, wait, I need to put some stuff back. That's what our job is today. So for folks who've said, you know, it's our job to have already done this. This includes today. Today is our budget deadline. This is included as part of that process. And now that we have a mill rate from the work that we've done, this is our, this is our moment to have that conversation about what is our target, what is our goal for our residents, and how do we achieve that goal? Um, we have, we have failed to have that conversation today. So I appreciate the time. I'll just make my final remarks on the budget now because unless I'm engaged, I don't, you know, see a reason to remark further. Um, I will be supporting this budget. The vote today is not on whether or not we like this budget. I hate this budget. I'm gonna be clear, I hate this budget. This budget is not good. It is better than the mayor's budget. It is more honest than the mayor's budget. And in regards to debt service, it's probably been the more honest budget since I've been on the council. We worked hard to get there, and there is a lot more work to do in the future. But out of respect for the work that we have done as a team to build a better, more honest budget for our town, we have done that work. That has been good work. There are things we can improve on, but I'm standing by that work. Our, I, and just to be very, very clear, forgive my repetition, but our vote today is not on whether or not we like this budget. Our vote today is whether we support our budget or the mayor's proposed budget. A no today is a vote for the mayor's proposed budget, which exacerbates the reasons that some folks are justifying their no vote today. So if you are for, if you are concerned with our budget because it underfunds our obligations, because it overstates our revenues or understates our, our liabilities or our expenses, understand that the mayor's budget is worse. So while ours may not be perfect, it is an improvement, and a no vote is to exacerbate those issues. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you to all of my colleagues for, uh, sitting by and being patient these past couple of months. And thank you especially to our public servants who've, not only our department heads who aren't with us today, but Director Jackson, Attorney Grun, Mr. Sendroff, uh, and, and many, many others, uh, especially Clerk Renta, who has um, really gone above and beyond always, but, but continues to do so. Thank you all for your service to the town and bearing with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McDowell. Uh, Counselor Wetmore?
Uh, thank you. Um, the reason I'm voting against this budget, as I explained before, is because what we did today is raise the tax collection rate. I think everyone has a right to their opinion. I know what I'm voting for. Uh, we, we knew we were gonna have a bigger tax hike because we gave so much uh, money or whatever to the departments, and rightfully, maybe so. But I think that was the time. But I think that was the time when we knew we were gonna have to raise the rate, that we should have made the cuts, and that's it for me. And thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Whitmore. I would just say, you know, we do seem to be moving towards our wrap-up here, so, uh, folks, this is our time. If you wish to opine on the budget, uh, before the final vote, that would be the time. Uh, Ms. Sheumaker?
Thank you. I will be voting for this budget. I have a lot of respect for, um, the range of expertise we have on the council and the range of expertise we have in our departments. Um, nobody's ever a hundred percent happy with a budget. This is something like my, I don't know, I've lost count of how many budgets I've delivered. Somewhere in the teens. Um, I've never been a hundred percent happy. I'm not a hundred percent happy now. I had a very specific concern that I brought into today's deliberations. The mill rate was the one thing we had not yet looked at as a group. And, um, I did spend some time, uh, funneling queries to our finance department. Based on my past experience, I understood that we needed to look at large lines. I, of course, didn't wanna cut the debt service line. Uh, we need to take care of that. I chose to focus on some lines that I had a high degree of confidence that we could actually work with. We almost passed a way-too-low mill rate last year, and we've exceeded even the conservative, I'm, I'm sorry, collection rate. Uh, the, the, the very conservative collection rate that we almost implemented last year, and we've even exceeded that collection rate this year in a difficult year. So I did not feel, uh, that, and a, an adjustment upward in the collection rate was a risky matter as we come out of the pandemic. Um, I do feel that we could have given more, uh, relief to the taxpayers on the mill rate. Um, but I'm on the record with them as to what my concerns were and what I tried to do. And I will vote for this budget mainly because I appreciate all the work that we have spent all these hours doing over the past weeks, and I wanna stand behind our work together. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheumaker. Mr. Farmer, uh, Ms. Klaus has a virtual hand raised. Uh, so I'm gonna go her and then next you, sir. Uh, no, you're up next, Mr. Farmer. Uh, Councilwoman Klaus?
Hi, thank you for recognizing me virtually. And hopefully you'll be able to understand me. I'm kinda going in and out of, uh, service, so if there's an issue, please just let me know. Um, I, I just wanna say that, yes, I am going to vote for this budget. Um, I appreciate all of the work that all the department heads and their staff do. Um, special thanks to, uh, Ms. Renta. And I also just wanna put out a plea to all of the departments, um, to make sure that they do focus on whatever revenue lines that they have. Um, because I think that's going to be a major player for next year's budget. Uh, so thank you to everybody, and I appreciate all the hard work everybody has done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Klaus. Counselor Farmer?
Thank you, Council President. I, uh, I thought, I, uh, raised my hand to be on first on the queue, so I apologize.
Oh, God, I'm sorry. As far as I do forget about that. My apologies.
It's all good. Um, I, I'll just be bold. I, I'll try to be brief, um, but we know that's not my strong suit, so I'll just be bold. Um, we don't have a vision for the town. Um, neither the leadership, uh, through the mayor's office or ourselves have created a vision, right? We have different priorities, but we don't have a vision of where we need to move as a town. God rest his soul, former counselor, uh, Gagliardi made motions throughout the year to make cuts to our last budget. Um, and we never got around to that. Um, we're gonna have to do that. It is only because of COVID-19 that we are not in the marb. The marb is a conversation, uh, that I started three years ago. And it's like, cool, if we can't work together, let's just cut ribbons, slap each other on the back, and have less animosity. We need to have a capital budget. We need to have a long-term plan. We have to have a unified vision of where we want to move as a town, uh, really as a ring city. And part of that has to be regionalization and working with our surrounding neighbors to actualize that. We have a community of eds and meds, and we have to realize that a, a, and do so. Public safety is important to some. Uh, but it has exponentially increased. Um, we always say, listen to our constituents, read the emails, so on and so forth. We had tons of emails from the library. We cut the library, right? Because we are in austerity budget, and we have to set priorities. And some of those priorities in the will of constituents don't always line up, 'cause at the end of the day, what we are doing today is figuring out what people can stomach as a mill rate and what they can afford. This is a generational community. People buy into this community because they want to be here. So I, I, I say to my colleagues in summation, uh, we need to be serious about making a long-term plan. If the administration fails to do so, it is our responsibility to do that. If that's not usually what we do as the fiscal authorities, that's what we have to do in order to protect the taxpayers. Uh, I'm going to be hoping in the next couple of weeks that we come up with a capital budget that we actually stick by, and that the CARES Act money, once we get the guardrails, that we, the fiscal authorities who hold the purse strings dictate how we expect the administration to spend that money. That money is not a slush fund for them. That is for us to protect the taxpayers. I thank all of y'all for the work that you've done, especially Ms. Renta. Thank Attorney Gruen, uh, for her work. And I also ask us to pay attention to the eighteenth when we go over our charter revision, as that also sets up the rules and the vision that we have for our town. All things are political, uh, and this is a political process. I'm hoping that we can come out of it on the better side as a collective community through you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Farmer. Is there anyone else who would like to, uh, speak to our budget before the vote? Council Austin?
Just, I'm.
Yes, Ms. Gary, will do.
Just again, um, process being new to this, I have heard the, the conversations that have been, or the comments that have been said today, that the budget process that we should have thought about this when we were deliberating that line item. I echo what, um, Councilman McDowell said. We were in deep debate at that time on individual items, I felt, and that we would have this wrap-up, and I asked about it, do we have reconciliation? And I do think that that's what this, uh, day is when we actually come back to address some of the key points of what we're doing in budget deliberation. I understand that the main goal was to be financially soluble this year and address the fund balance. Uh, I feel that the second item is that after that, we should address the mill rate. I don't think that we put enough deliberation into addressing the mill rate. But I respect the work that we did getting here. Um, I just would propose in future years that this is a more serious conversation at this point about true reconciliation, about our second goal of how do we now look back and say, the work that we've done, can we make it any better for the people of the town? That said, again, I support what we've done to this point and, um, move forward.
Thank you, Council Austin. Counselor Gary?
Yes, I also wanted to echo all of my colleagues here, and I do wanna say that I do not like the budget. I didn't like the budget last year. I never liked the budget. Um, I do believe there are some other cuts that could have been made, but that's just my personal opinion, and other people felt differently. Um, I just hope later, I mean, in the next, in the years to come, that we could do better. And of course, I'm not looking for a perfect budget. Um, maybe everybody should see Hamden as a whole Hamden and, and not want this for their area or for their concern or their fa, de facto fear and stuff, and we can get a better mill rate going forward, but, um, I will be supporting this budget because, of course, I don't wanna support the mayor's budget. And I just hope we could do better, you know, coming up to the next years. And that's it. And thank all the department heads. I thank all of you guys for everything you've done. I thank the council for doing all these hours that they did.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Gary. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the budget before we take our vote? Council Row Lewis?
Thank you, President McGary. Um, I first wanna thank Ms. Renta for sticking with us, and, um, I know it was sometimes painful, but thank you so much. Um, Attorney Gruen, thank you for those twelve o'clock at night that you had to wake up and answer questions. Director Jackson, thank you. Assistant Director Glaser, thank you. Adam Sanderoff, I appreciate you. Thank you so much. For each and every member of the council who has, who have worked so hard on this budget, thank you. Um, I know it got intense a lot of nights, but thank you for sticking in there. Um, and this is what, where we are. Um, I am not for the change in the, the collection rate. I must say that. Based on the fact that we have farmed out a section of the collection for the, as it relates to the car taxes, we've farmed some of that out. And so even with someone else being in that department, collection rate, in my opinion, won't change, but we have made it, and that is something that we are going to have to live with. Um, even though this is not a perfect budget, I will support it. Because if I don't, I know what will happen next. And, um, I'm not gonna throw out any numbers in the wind, because that's where it will be. It will be in the wind. I don't like to be lectured as it relates to how I wanna vote or how I don't wanna vote. I think we all have, um, responsibilities, and we make our own decisions. So I don't want, I wanna feel like I've been beaten over the head after I've been here so long with a stick to say, how are you gonna vote? How are you gonna vote? No. We all have to make those decisions ourselves. But again, we've gone through this process. We know that there are individuals out there. We know that there are constituents, a member, who will be tax part of. Yes. We wish we could do better, and I don't want to lay this only on the administration. I want to lay this on us as well, because we have always said we are the fiscal authority of the town. So let's take on that responsibility fully, whether we are up or we're down or wherever we are. We have to take that responsibility. So we're, we know it's a political thing, but let's not make it all political, because if we do, yes, we're part of it. Now we have a track record. So everyone who is going out there, we, you have a track record, I have a track record, all of us have a track record. And we will most certainly be part of that when we are called to task, because we like to say we're the first string. So that's where we are. Um, I thank you again for giving me this opportunity to speak, and, um, I appreciate it, and let's move the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Row Lewis. Uh, and Mr. Caesar?
I'm not happy about the collection rate at all. Really, I really am not. Um, I think that there's some positives, and I think in terms of what was there versus what wasn't there. You look at the, um, Board of Education has been increased over the mayor's number, which is a positive thing. I'm also pleased about the fact that we have added, um, patrol people to the police department. Um, we have additional staff there. Um, there was a dramatic cut last year, so it's nice to see some rebuilding there. I think I definitely am happy about that. You look at overall in terms of other departments as well, too. I think we did our best to go through each line the best we possibly can. Uh, but like I said, I, I think there's some, some positives in this budget. I know I led, I led the charge on some of them in terms of discussion points. Though I, um, you know, reluctantly will be supporting this budget, but I do wanna say clearly, I'm not happy about this tax collection rate. I think it's a, it's a myth. I think it's not reality. And I think it's unfortunate that it was, was put where it was. Uh, we'll see what happens with it. I definitely think we will, but, um, you know, like I said, I, I support, you know, um, doing the right thing, and I think this budget definitely does the right thing in many areas. It's not perfect. It's absolutely not perfect. I understand that. Uh, but I'm happy about the support for the police department. I'm happy about, about support for education. Um, you know, found throughout this budget, so I definitely will be supporting that. I think it's definitely better than where it could have been. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caesar. Uh, Counselor Bonnadees?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanna say, um, that we did, we worked hard, we fought hard. We, we are, we do have different priorities. We don't always agree, but I want all my colleagues on the council, um, to know that I respect the work you've done, the work you put in, the comments, the, um, trying, you know, making your case for the things that you want. I respect it. I don't always agree, and I am a little bit of a fighter. Um, and, but I wanna know, I want you to know that even though we don't agree with everything all the time, I respect you, and I think that's more important than always agreeing, is that we respect each other and treat each other accordingly. I think we've worked, you know, really hard, and, and if we've done our work right, no one's really happy. No one's got everything they want, and no one's got nothing that they want. I think, uh, we've done good work here, and it is expensive to run a government. It's expensive to deliver all these services, provide protection, uh, public safety, first responders, community services, everything, education, everything that we run is hugely expensive for a town this size. Um, it is, it is what it is. We are here now. I'm gonna support this budget. Um, and as we go forward, you know, we, it, it's out now. The cat, the cat's out of the bag. The, the, the finance situation is, uh, is, well, is, is common knowledge now among our town's residents, and, um, you know, they're gonna hold our feet. They're gonna hold everyone's feet to the fire here. Um, to make sure that we, as we move forward over the next few years, we know we're facing a difficult decade. Once 2024 hits, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a very difficult decade of, of high taxes. So, um, we really, uh, we gotta balance that out with the services that we need to provide. But I think we're doing good work, the fiscal stability, and perhaps with changes to the charter revision with, um, this, another fiscal board, we could get there. Just gotta, um, do our best to work together, and thank, thank you, everyone, for your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Council Bonnades. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to our budget before we take a vote? Is there anyone else like to speak to our budget before we take our vote? I have just some very quick comments myself. Again, I'll join the chorus of thanks to our department heads, uh, especially Ms. Gruen and, uh, uh, Mr. Jackson and, uh, Mr. Glarza, Mr. Sendroff, and especially, of course, Ms. Renta, who, uh, quite literally, we can't do it without her. Uh, she keeps us on track. Um, she, um, uh, is, uh, maybe this is between her and I more, but she's very funny. And, uh, and she's also, without her, like, literally, we'd just all fall apart, and it has when we haven't been here. I would also like to, uh, say a thank you and an apology to all of our, uh, spouses and loved ones um, in whatever category they may be. Um, when we choose to be here, we are choosing not to be engaging, uh, with our families and our, our loved ones, um, in, in any number of ways, and I know that many of our council people who are present here have suffered, um, excuse me, um, difficulties and losses during this pro. Excuse me, uh, difficulties and losses during this, during this time, and that can be especially difficult. So I thank everyone who made the time, the families, uh, who, uh, took the time to, to support us during this process. Mr. Weber, you'd like to some comments?
No, certainly I want to come behind you, and I'm sorry that I wasn't able to get in prior when you were asking, does anybody else want to comment? So thank you for recognizing me. I wanted to as well just kind of echo, you know, the sentiments of my esteemed colleagues and just say that I certainly appreciate the process of learning, the deliberation and the budgetary process of being the fiscal authority of the town of Handen. And I really want to, you know, thank all the, you know, hard work that everyone has put in. I don't want to start naming people, but surely I will forgive someone. But I would just want to say a blanket thank you to everyone. While just from a learning perspective and also a a personal opinion, I would love just to see more not necessarily total agreement, but just more continuity. And so I look forward to furthering the process through the end of of this of this process. And I really look forward to working with everyone. I just want to say thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any further comments from folks before we kind of wrap up and go to the vote?
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Well, I'm not quite done yet. As far as just a couple of things I do want to say. I'm going to to echo a lot of what my colleague said. You know, this is a budget that no one seems to be in love with, which means there's lots of compromises made on all sides. So that probably is the best budget we can come come to. I do believe the council created budget after all our long, hard work is a better budget than than the what the mayor proposed. But I also do have to say the mayor's proposed budget is the best budget I've seen in quite a while in my time on council. So kudos to our finance team in helping put that together. I also do want to say, however, to our finance team, we will be pressing hard for that capital budget over the next few weeks. And also, you know, we did speak and will speak more about what are the ongoing issues for for the town for the council has been not the having a salary program that deals with our increases for our non-union folks that deals with equity and parity for gender and race. So that is something we need to be working on and we setting a target for June. Let's get that done in June. And I do think you know, one of the most powerful forces in nature and in human psychology is inertia. And we have been battling decades of inertia with our budget in these past few years, and it doesn't doesn't change on a dime. But we are making good positive changes. Last, you know, year was a step. This is another step. And I do believe future councils will be will be happy with the changes we have made. It's not perfect, but I do believe it's better. And having said all that, let's have a roll call vote on our budget.
Can we just clarify with the mill rate on the final dollar number before we take this vote? Usually fill out the thing first and read from that, but we didn't do that.
While that's happening, just as a clarification, I know you read everything at the beginning of the meeting. That reading has to take place for the second vote, correct?
Or actually, it's kind of a practice that we do. I don't know if there's any requirement that we have to. But I do think we should say, I think Ms. Renta makes a very good point that we should say the numbers, so we're all kind of on the same side.
I'd be happy with that. Thank you.
The mill rate is fifty-two point four four. And the total budget is two hundred and sixty-two million, four hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Let's do this. Councilman Austin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ayad.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bonnadees.
Yes.
Councilman Caesar.
Yes.
Councilwoman Klaus.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan.
Yes.
Councilman Farmer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gary.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horsey.
Yes.
Councilman McDowell.
Yes.
President McGary.
Yes.
Councilwoman Row Lewis.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Weber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Webb.
No.
Want to pose the passes?
Okay. We did it. Thank you again to everyone. It's been a long journey. We do have our council meeting on Monday, and after that, we have, I think, a very deserved break for a couple of weeks. So we'll keep that in mind. And and as Mr. Farmer mentioned before, we do have also charter revision coming up relatively soon. So McDowell.
Hey, I'm sorry. I just, in the past, I remember two votes. I just wanted to clarify the process. I know that in the past, we we I just want to make sure we're on the up and up on this.
Yeah, there happened two votes in the past. Ms. Groin wrote in one this year. Ms. Groin, do you want to speak to that?
You know, you've done it differently, different years. I merely copied your ordinance from last year. You may have divided the question before. You may have had two documents. I know two years ago or three years ago, there were two documents. What Mr. McGary read into the record at the beginning is the entire ordinance. And so your vote just now was on the entire ordinance document that's before you.
Thank you. I forgive me for being extra cautious. I just, we worked hard. I don't think we've ever had fourteen votes on a budget, even before, like even before me being on the council. I don't think that's been a thing for a very long time. So should be proud of the work we did. More work ahead. Thank you all and appreciate you allowing me to be extra cautious there. Make sure we don't get tripped up on the technicality. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Farmer.
Thank you all.
Just, excuse me, Mr. Farmer, just as a follow up. Mr. McGary, you did read the entire thing, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Councilor Farmer. Can I hear you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, Council President. Thank everyone. I'm hoping by our next meeting, requesting, kind of demanding by our next meeting that we can get the capital budget. And will be anticipating an excitement to see that document through you, Council President.
We'll be working on it. All right.
What, Mr. McGary, just to be super cautious, did you read in all the numbers in the ordinance as it stands right now?
We read the numbers separately. Do you want me to go back and read the actual?
I just want to make sure that you're passing everything, that there is no doubt about it.
All right. Do we need to re-vote?
Not necessarily, if your record reflects.
Okay, just one second. I'll share a screen again and plug in the, I'll read number one in seven again with the numbers plugged in.
If you've done it, I I'm just, I I just don't want anyone calling me on Monday and saying, we didn't do this.
Now, I remember that years ago, we had two votes on it. We set the mill rate with the second vote. I remember that explicitly happening where we had to do a second vote to actually set the rate. I don't, we ended up to figure out the number, they came back and we voted.
Right. Mr. Caesar, I believe they voted separately on each of the paragraphs in the the ordinance. So you're correct.
I hear we're not like breaking a rule here with the state or whatever it may be. That's all I'm saying.
No.
No, we did it last year.
If you if you voted each of the blanks, each of the paragraphs with the numbers filled in, went through, I think it's, I don't know, there's there's a lot of paragraphs in there.
Thank you.
Okay. So I can plug the numbers in here. Mr. Jackson, just a confirmation. Two hundred and sixty-two million, four hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and zero cents.
That is correct.
Thank you. And the mill rate is fifty-two point four four.
That is correct.
All right, the legislative council hereby.
There's a third, there's a third blank there in number one.
That's the number we usually get from finance, because that's the number that goes into the tax office number. Usually, we fill this out and we read it and then vote. That's how.
That's right. That that I that's what I'm trying to make sure that what you're voting on is the complete document.
Numbers, we fill all of these in, we get the appropriations that need to go into tax line. Then it's read and then we vote. That's how it's done in the past.
Yeah.
Do we need a re-vote? We let's just make sure we do it the right way.
If you didn't vote with the numbers that.
We we voted on the mill rate of fifty-two four four and let's do it again. Make sure.
Well, it.
I mean.
Four expenditures and a line for appropriations. So.
Plenty of clarity. Yeah, we don't have the appropriations amount here.
Right. No, because we didn't break to do that like.
Okay, let's break, let's break to do that.
Let's do that. So how about Mr. Jackson confer with Ms. Renta, plug in the numbers, send the new document, and let's do it.
Okay.
Like ten minutes, fifteen minutes? What do you need?
I think five minutes. I already have the number. I just want to confirm it with Mr. Glarza.
Five minutes. Okay. And we're looking for numbers. We're looking for expenditures and appropriations.
It's one fifty-four. Let's come back at two o'clock.
Okay.
Very good.
Are you all still on, Kim?
I am. I'm just trying to get my window back up.
Okay. I got all the numbers, if you're in a position to take them down.
Yep, I'm going to fill them in the blanks. Hold on. Okay, so the first one is in paragraph one. Town budget in the amount of.
Two six two four one eight nine five five.
All right, hold on. Let me put a line under that for him. Okay. In expenditures and what in appropriations?
The same number.
Okay. Right, and then our next line is down in paragraph seven. The mills is.
Fifty-two forty-four.
Two forty-four. All right, the grand list of October twenty twenty in the amount of.
Two hundred and one million four hundred thousand oh thirty-seven.
Two oh one, four hundred oh three seven. To finance appropriations of.
Two six two four one eight nine five five.
All right, that should do it. Let me save this and send it to President McGary.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
President McGary's been here the whole time.
I'm going to send it to all of you, actually.
Very good. That way, we all have it. We'll recertify and just be on be on the safe side.
Exactly. Email. I don't know why my laptop does this to me. I got a kid. Stop. All right, I'm sending it to you guys all in an email right now. I will see, see, sue.
You just emailed it, Kim?
No, 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 not yet. Hold up. Trying to find it on my desktop. Someone to save. Give me one second. Let me mute myself so I don't. Okay, you should all have it now.
Renta, thank you. So I'll read it. You just got the numbers plugged in there now?
Yep, they're underlined.
Hold on just a moment. So I'm going to ask for consent to recertify our vote. Does everyone approve? Do I have unanimous consent? Thank you. So I'm just going to read through with the numbers in and then just ask for a quick verbal vote, and that should be about it. Will you share my screen now? Can you see my screen? Whereas pursuant to to ten dash two A of the charter of the town of Handen, the mayor is required to transmit a proposed town budget to the legislative council not later than March eighteenth of each year. And whereas on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, the mayor transmitted the proposed town budget, including the contents required. including the contents required by ten dash two B of the Hampden Charter. And whereas the legislative council conducted public hearings on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one town, and March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one Board of Ed, in accordance with ten dash three A, which requires a public hearing, honor before the first day of May. And whereas in accordance with ten dash three B of the Town of the Hampden Charter, the legislative council is required to take final action on the proposed town budget, not later than May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas in accordance with ten dash three B one, at the time the council approves the adopted town budget, it may fix the rated mills, which shall be levied on the taxable property in the town for the ensuing fiscal year. Now, be it ordained by majority vote, legislative council, as follows that. The legislative council hereby adopts a budget for the fiscal year commencing on July first, twenty twenty-one, and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Designated as the adopted town budget in the amount of two mil, two hundred and sixty-two million, four hundred and eighteen, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars in expenditures, and two hundred and sixty-two million, four hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-five, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars in appropriations. Two, for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, taxes not in excess of two hundred and fifty dollars shall be collected in one payment pursuant to CGS twelve dash one forty-four and property taxes under twenty-five dollars waived pursuant to CGS twelve dash forty-four C. And three, for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, the dates on which taxes on the grand list of twenty twenty shall become due and payable on July first, twenty twenty-one, and January first, twenty twenty-two. And four, the legislative council will modify the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget, adopted town budget by motion or order in a manner consistent with the applicable provisions of the Town Charter, including but not limited to transfers, additional appropriations, and modification of the budget. And five, the mayor shall be authorized to transfer between line items within any department, tuition or board, the amount of ten thousand dollars, without approval of the legislative council, with the exception of those transfers governed by ten dash seven D one B of the Town Charter. Six, at the finance director shall be authorized and ordered as follows. Close out completed capital projects accounts and transfer any surpluses in any amount to cover deficits or any capital projects approved by the legislative council, not to exceed amounts appropriate there. For or after consultation with the Towns' bond council to be used for the reimbursement of principal and/or interest paid on the Towns' bonds for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. B, close out and transfer any surpluses in any amounts in the line accounts of the budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, to the general fund, with the exception of the medical self-insurance and workers' compensation self-insurance accounts. C, transfer the accrued interest in the, in the capital projects fund to the general fund as of the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. D, effectuate interdepartmental transfers, general and special, in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars during the last ninety days of the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, in accordance with ten dash seven D two A of the Town Charter. E, report to the mayor and legislative council all such transfers, including the individual and aggregate funds transferred. Seven, the tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two shall be fixed at fifty-two point four-four mills on the adjusted grand list of October twenty twenty in the amount of two hundred and one million, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, finance appropriations of two hundred and two million, four hundred and eighteen, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Just to recertify, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One in opposition.
Aye.
All right, thanks, everyone. Sorry for that last minute, but better to be safe than sorry. I'd also like to thank our attendees who have stuck it out with us for so long. There's still a day out there. Let's try to enjoy it. Goodbye, everyone. Motion to adjourn. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Goodbye, Mr. McDowell. We'll say seconded by.
Oh, yeah, by everybody.
All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye for now.